My cousin bought me a lion shirt.
My brother's wife, she spent all my brothers' money.
Everybody ready? Alright, it is nine o'clock. I thank everybody that is here for coming to this 9:00 AM Saturday, January 27th, 2024 evening. That's early on weekends, so thank you again. First thing we have on the agenda is Pledge Allegiance, 239.24.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is 240.24 Roll Call attendance. Ms. Hines is not going to be here today, so Dr. Weaver, if you could call a roll.
Ms. May?
Present.
Mr. Neal is not here, Ms. Hines is not here, I am here. Mr. Gray?
Here.
Is that me, Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
There are five board members present.
Next item on the agenda is 241.24 Citizens Comment on Agenda Items. Do we have any citizens wishing to make comments today at this time?
I don't have an agenda, so I'll kind of...
Alright, so with no citizens' comments, the next item on the agenda, we'll move right into 242.24, and that is the 2024 Board Workshop. The first presentation we have is Working as an Effective Governance Team with Julie Kaminsky from MASV. And give us Kaminsky for names.
Yes.
Dr. Kaminsky.
Good morning. It's my pleasure. Thank you so much. I will go back and forth to... I can never stay in one spot. The first thing I'm going to have pass around is just the Michigan Association of School Boards likes to keep up-to-date records. If you may, recording who was present for today's workshop.
Book paper is on your mic, so it's...
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you. We like to keep up-to-date records, and so if you could, please, I'm going to pass this around. Could you double-check that the information that we have here is correct and accurate? If anything is not accurate, feel free to cross out and write the correct information in, and please, if you could, initial or sign our surname, indicating that you're participating today in the workshop. Thank you so much. And when it gets to the end, if you would just flag me, I often forget, and then I get home, and then I don't have it, so that would be really great. So our time together this morning is typically about three hours. I think it's nice to have a little break in the middle, if you're comfortable with that. I think if we can, and I know I believe lunch is going to be served at 12 o'clock, and so we can take a break midway through, because three hours is a really long time to sit and listen and engage for anybody, so we'll plan to do that. This is the Effective Governance Team Workshop, and I really love this workshop because it serves as a nice reset for boards that have been together for a really long time. It serves as a nice common understanding piece, similar to taking a field trip, if you will, with a classroom of students. We all have this common experience that we can use as the root of where we're working from, and even if you've been on the school board for a period of time, it's nice to do a reset, especially when you're tackling some difficult things as a community and your school district. It's nice to remind ourselves of why we do this work, what it means to do this work, and it reminds boards that they're really a team, a team working together to govern the school district. And so that's really the focus of our time together this morning. I think it's important to kind of lay the ground rules of how we will work together. These are some pretty universally accepted ground rules, if you will, but we can certainly add others or agree to others if you feel they're missing or needed. We hope that you will be engaged. I know that it's Saturday. For many of you, this is the sixth workday this week, so there are things that are going to come up with your families and your work and all of those things. So if you get a text or an email, I'm not offended if you respond at all. I know you live dynamic lives. I may get a text also, or something that I need to respond to, and I'll try to do that at the break, but if something comes up, feel free to step out and do what you need to do. Please, if you will, have your focus be to listen for understanding and to respect others' viewpoints. We may not all see things the same way. There's nothing terribly controversial in what we're going to be working on today together, so I don't know that it necessarily will be something where we have vastly different viewpoints, but we could. That you do have your phones on silence, and that you respect airtime, and that everybody has a chance to have their voice and face and to be seen and heard throughout our working time together. Are there others that you think we should bring into the room before we get started? No? Feel like they're reasonable? Okay. So it's Saturday morning, and I think it might be day fifteen with no sunshine, right? So how are you feeling? We're going to do a little bit of a check-in and see how everybody's doing, and make sure that we know that this is, it's formal yet it's informal. We're together at Saturday. We want this to be something where you feel relaxed and that life is, you know, we have a nice time working and learning together. So I like this one, because it's a bit of a fun icebreaker. We're going to do some introductions, and we're going to do some things to engage you to get started. But let's just start with the sheep scale. I love this one. How are you feeling? Each of these images have numbers. Some are silly, some are tired, some are like, you know, I'm overwhelmed and confused. Where would you put yourself on the sheep scale this morning? If any of you may not have to participate, and I'm going to make you participate, but we'd love if you do, because it's more fun when everybody participates, and I think it's also, everybody gets more out of it. Anybody want to start? Where are you feeling?
I'm two.
You're two. You're just content and happy?
Yes.
Okay, great.
My hair is combed.
And your hair is combed. Yes, this guy, on number two, he looks like he just went to the groomer.
I'm five.
You're five. Sleepy? Have a, you got your coffee, though. That's a good sign. And a big goal.
Right.
So you're a set.
I'm maybe.
We'll see. I'll keep checking in.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm five as well. It's a Saturday morning.
Yes.
Two small kids at home, so they don't know what it means to sleep in.
I understand. So you've been up since the crack of dawn, if there was one. Yes, it's Gray again? Yes. Okay, sleepy, sleepy?
I'm nine. I'm just happy.
You're happy.
Just happy. That's awesome. That's wonderful.
And I'm six. I'm just festive and ready for the occasions.
Okay, so you're feeling rested and ready for the occasion. There's a lot of good occasions this weekend.
Yes, it is.
The board workshop and Lions game, right?
That's right.
That's pretty cool. So, yes, and speaking of the Lions game, there's the watch party down in Detroit at Ford Field, and then there's a Pistons game at Little Caesars, and then there's a hockey game that my son's playing in, in the Little Caesars Arena in the practice side. So please send me positive vibes to get down here and home tomorrow, because I don't know how we're going to do it with the traffic. So there's lots of festive occasions. Okay, and anybody else want to participate? I want to make sure everybody feels like they're part of the learning experience. Anyone want to share in the back, or how they're feeling? Or you go?
I can go.
Okay.
I can say I'm a two, like I'm pretty content today, it's Saturday, but I had a good night's sleep.
Good. Two, yeah.
I'm going to add what Jen said, too. Content, just feel good.
Yeah, good.
I'm three.
You're three? I love it, I love it. Anybody else? Do you like to share?
I'm also a three. I rescheduled my life today, and I'm here, and I have a church fellowship meeting at 3:00. I'll be getting out a little early.
You got it. Busy schedule. So you're just making it.
Just making it.
Got it. I got it. I got it. I understand. Yeah, I think I'm two, too.
I think I'm feeling two also, right?
So, and I'm excited to be here. This is one of my favorite things that I get to do, is work with school boards and school people, because it's something that I absolutely love, I love. So before we move on, let's do some introductions. Let's know who's in the room together, so that this can be as productive and enjoyable as possible, and I will start in model. My name is Julie Kaminsky. I absolutely love this work. I have been working for the Michigan Association of School Boards for just shy of two years. I will say that at this stage of my life and my career, I find it to be some of the most fulfilling work that I've done. This is my 27th year in education. While I'm officially retired from public education, I continue to work full-time. I've worked in Wayne and Oakland Counties, five school districts, one private school. I'm currently an instructional coach, and I coach principals in a Oakland County school district, that I really enjoy the work. I've worked in elementaries, little schools, high schools, and it's something that I really love. I have two boys that are my, like, joy in this world, and my third boy is my husband, who's pretty awesome, too. Kim was my kid's principal at one point in time, right? And so we know each other from when the boys were little, and so this is work that I really, really love. The other thing that I do to keep me busy in case I don't have enough, we manage my son's hockey team, and I do leadership coaching for national-bound elite hockey teams. And I work with those boys and help them to discover their inner leaders. One of the things I've discovered is public schools. And schools in general don't do a great job of letting people know who they are deeply, as humans, as leaders, as personality types. And so when you do that work with these boys, who are really, really talented athletes, you discover so much about themselves, and they discover so much about themselves, and they recognize that it isn't just about their talent on the ice, it's about their whole character development, and how they can bring their whole selves, their best selves. It can elevate any team, so on any given day, they can compete with any other team. And sometimes it's the grit and the heart that causes just the difference that they need. So we always talk about the difference will always be in your hearts and your hearts. And I love this work, because you have such a busy, dynamic life. I know it. I haven't even heard your introduction yet, and I know that you have busy, dynamic lives. You have little, small children. I know the professional careers that you must have, and yet you decide that you want to give of your time as an elected official to help govern your local school district. And that's a significant amount of time. Here you are on a Saturday morning, you know, engaging in learning and workshops for the betterment of yourselves, for the betterment of your team that you're governing on, and the betterment of your local school and community. And that's huge. So that already speaks volumes as to who you are as individuals, and this experience, I hope, will be as fulfilling for you as it is for me, because it helps us to ground ourselves again in the midst of a busy and hectic school year, where we're entering the second semester, and see where we are as a team, and how we can forge forward to keep ourselves on track. And so that's really the work today. So can I put you on the spot, Dave, and how do you do a brief introduction?
Sure. Good morning. I actually began my career with the school district in 1997, when I was elected to the board. I served as president in 1998, 1999. I currently work two jobs. I do tax appeals on commercial and industrial property before the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and I'm also a consultant to the transportation company that designed the transportation infrastructure for the Wayne County Medical Examiner, the Gift of Life Michigan, and the Michigan Funeral Directors Association.
Wow, that's a lot. It's really nice to meet you.
Thanks.
You've been serving the community for 27 years.
Yeah, one way or another, since my son started playing baseball. I thought, I'll start him. Someone says, "Boy, you should be an umpire." I should. "You should be the coach." I should. "You should run the city council." I should. They were wrong, but...
Were you an ump?
What? Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah. There it is. Very good. That's awesome. Roger?
Hi, my name is Fred. My life is pretty hectic right now. I have a mother-in-law that is end-stage, unfortunately, and, you know, a lot of mental night runs and stuff like that. I am a pastor, and enjoy that work very much. I think I'm the longest-serving board member, well, over 20 years. And I love this district. I want to see it excel.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Brad Gray. I am board president, and I am a recently licensed attorney in the state of Michigan. I work for the National Labor Relations Board. I have two small kids, like I mentioned, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. My daughter attends Stollmeyer here in the district, and I attended Wayne Westland Schools graduate from John Bonn.
Awesome. It's really nice to meet you. Congratulations on your new career.
Hey, well, good morning. I am Kimberly. I have been an educator for 28 years. I have worked in both the public school sector and charter school sector. I've been a teacher, curriculum director, principal, and now a central office administrator. I sit on three other boards, Michigan Association of State and Federal Programs Specialists, as well as the Wayne County Association of School Boards, and I sit on the board of a nonprofit. I have one son, very close-knit family, very close to my son and my parents, and, yeah, I think that's about it.
That's a lot. That's a lot. So you're not bored, is what you're saying?
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all.
Well, good morning. My name is Luana Abney Mitchell. Let me see. I was married for 28 years before my husband passed away. We got four daughters, and now 11 grandchildren. That's what brought me to the school district, because they attended the district. Outside of being on the Board of Education, I serve as vice president for Parks and Recs Commission in the city of Inxter. I'm on the Beautification Committee of the city of Inxter. I am council fourth district advisor for our community, and I just serve people. You know, I facilitate trainings for Starfish Family Services for families to understand that they can move from where they at and be able to financially take care of their family.
That's wonderful.
That's what I do. I serve people, and I love it.
That's awesome. That's wonderful. I always love to hear people's introductions and a little snippet of their story, because it's almost always the case that people that sit as school board members in local school districts are here for all wonderful reasons, and they are very committed people, and they have very interesting and fulfilling lives. So this will make the next thing I'm going to ask you to do fairly easy. I'm going to ask you to do two things, and you can jot it down anywhere, and it doesn't need to be complete sentences or anything like that. And some of you may have turned the page already, so that's okay if you did, but I would like you to think and reflect for just a moment on your personal why. Why do you want to serve the Wayne Westland Community Schools and their families and students instead as a Board of Education member? Why? Why do you do this? Why do you spend your Saturdays doing this? And then your second question, can you define what you think "team" means? The word "team." What does "team" mean? Now, if you turn the page, you might see an Maskey's version. I hope you won't look at it, just not yet. So what you would define as "team" and your personal why, and I'll give you just a moment.
Could you tell the part about "team" again?
Oh, could you give, could you jot down what you would describe as the best definition of "team"? Your definition of "team." Luana, I just noticed your boots. Those are super cute.
Oh, thanks.
You guys will love yourself.
My sister-in-law brought, she just sent Amazon packages to your house, and I say, "This is why my brother can't retire, because he's spending all his money."
Those are cute. So I'll take just another moment, and then I'm going to ask that you share two, of course, because it's more, it's more fun, and I think you get more out there, and we all engage in the work. Okay, does anybody want to start? Let's start with the why. First, we'll share our personal why. Why be a school board member? And then we'll shift our focus to the idea of "team." Okay, anybody want to start with their personal why? Okay.
So for me, I just, I didn't write it as a paragraph. I just kind of jotted down thoughts.
Totally fine.
So my why is to serve. For me, representation matters, to have multiple perspectives at the table. In me, I'm always an educator, and my love for kids.
Yes. Wonderful. Those are wonderful reasons to be a member of the school board. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else? Yes?
My why is that the district's important to me. My kids are fourth-generation Wayne Westland students, and I just want to make sure that my kids, as well as all the students, continue to be able to get a great education here.
Wonderful. So it's about the kids for you, and making sure it's what I'm seeking. Fred?
Yeah, to help the district to move forward, and I'm especially concerned with the staff, that they're comfortable because of their comfortable, and our kids are getting a better education.
Okay, so your end goal is the kids getting the best education, but you recognize that the staff are key to that being the case.
Yeah, I, you didn't ask for this, but I'm just going to say it. You ask any board member across the state, "It's for the kids, it's for the kids, it's for the kids," but sometimes our actions do not show that it's for the kids at all.
I understand. I understand. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else want to share their why?
My why is that I think the success of our school district is pivotal to the success of our entire community, and to the families that live here, and most importantly, the children that live here.
Yes.
If we're not successful, really, the community isn't successful.
Okay, agreed. Agreed. Thank you for sharing that. Luana, did you feel comfortable sharing?
Well, my why is because, well, I live in the city of Inxter. The city of Inxter does not have their own school district. Our school district was shut down, so we are divided among five different school districts. So my why is to serve, so our community can be aware of the services that's available for their families through education. So, and also, what my objective being is teaching the parents, making them understand that their environment in a child's education is a step up for their child.
Yes. Thank you. So you all have unique lenses. Fred, did you sort, yes, you did. I apologize. All of a sudden, I wasn't sure if I heard your response, and you're a fourth-generation Wayne Westland, and I did hear it. You all have your unique reasons for why you want to serve as a school board member in the Wayne Westland Community Schools. They're unique, yet there's this common theme that runs through all of your personal whys, which is that you want to do what's best for kids. You want to make sure that people know what services are available. You recognize that the success of the school district and the students that attend these schools has an impact on the community at large, the families that are here in the Wayne Westland community, and you recognize that the two are intertwined, and that you want to be a part of it. Fred, you shared that. Everybody will say that it's for the kids, but sometimes their actions don't match that. Their hearts and their heads are often in the right place, but their choices and their actions don't match, and you would like to be a voice for supporting what's truly best for kids, it sounds like. Brad, you talked about your own children, and the fact that this has been a community that has served your family for generations, and you want to make sure that it continues to be a great place for students to learn and families to live. And so you all have this common piece that runs through. Kim, you talked about serving, because you genuinely have a love of kids, and that you want to be of service, and you can never take yourself out of yourself, because you're always going to lead with being an educator, because that is who you are to your core, and that that's super important, that that voice and different voices are at the table as well, so that you can come up with the best possible plan for moving forward, which was also a theme I heard, the moving forward piece. Did I capture that pretty well? Okay, so we have this common sense of our why, yet we have unique reasons as well that drive us to do what we do. And sometimes we forget that when we serve on a governance board, a Board of Education, some of you shared in your introductions that you sit in other capacities on different boards. It's all in service of others, okay? But when you sit on a board and you're governing something, you really are creating your own unique team. And sometimes, particularly in the last, I don't know, five years, particularly around COVID and some of the other things that have been very polarizing in our society, some people have raised their hand to run for positions like Boards of Education. I'm not talking about you or this community. I'm speaking in very general terms right now. Some people wanted to get involved because they had a particular lens, or a particular belief, or a particular stance that they wanted to be sure that they brought to the board, or they felt that they had more power and influence than they actually had in the role of school board member. And sometimes the entry of those individuals who didn't quite understand that it was deserved, and didn't quite understand the role of a school board member, they often could get themselves into a situation that was incredibly frustrating, and change dynamics of school boards. And so this governance workshop is very good, I think, because it helps to lay the ground rules as a reminder of what are the roles and responsibilities of being a school board member. Don't worry about the crinkling, go right ahead. Go right ahead. I love it how thoughtful you were being, but please just open it. And it's very important that we remember that we're a team. So then the question becomes, what is a team? So I ask you to jot down, what would you say is the best definition of "team"? Now, MASV has a definition. We're going to look at it, and you might have already read it and looked at it, but I always love to hear your very first blush at defining "team." And it seems super obvious, like, "Team", everybody knows what a team is. Detroit Lions are a team. The Michigan football team won the national championship. We know what a team is, but do we? And what do we mean by "team"? Because language matters, like our intentions matter. So I would like to lay that groundwork, that I believe that a school board is a team that comes together for a certain purpose. But what is, what did you define "team"? Put me on the spot, sorry.
Individuals that work together to achieve a common goal.
Individuals. Individuals, so you're all unique, but you come together for a common goal. Love it. Anybody else? Yes?
All people on the team pulling together in the same direction.
Okay, the people are pulling together in the same direction, so you're individuals, common purpose, working in tandem to go in the same direction. Okay, fair. Love that. What else?
A group of people working together towards a goal.
Okay, a group of people working together towards a goal. That's a great definition. Anybody else?
I did, multiple perspectives, respectful discourse, common goal.
Okay, multiple perspectives, respectful discourse, and a common goal. Love it.
I got one or more persons working together to achieve a common goal. Um, and understanding that it's okay to disagree.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, so multiple perspectives, one or more people, common goal, okay to disagree.
Right.
Okay, very good. So we have common purpose, everybody said something along those lines, common goal, a group of people. Some people said individuals, some people said diverse perspectives. So you're bringing into that definition the notion that you don't have to check who you are at the door, right? You can bring your whole self into the room, the dad of two young children, the mom of a son who's in college, who's an educator. So we're, we don't have to check at the door who we are. That's, we want you here in your whole self, with your whole person and your complete thoughts and experience and perspective. But that we're working towards this common goal, and Fred said that we're rowing in the same direction. I saw a quote, I have it, I'm a collector of quotes. I keep them in a special folder in my photo roll. I saw one that I really love. I use it when I work with hockey teams, but I saw it the other day at a training on Thursday. And it was about common curriculum, right? Are we all engaged in teaching our tier one curriculum and treat upon? And it was make sure everybody in the boat is all rowing in the same direction and not drilling holes when you're not looking. And not drilling holes when you're not looking. And so that piece is such an interesting visual, right? Can you picture a group of people? Sometimes, um, some of the lakes, like Orchard Lake, for example, they have a rowing team for Orchard Lake St. Mary's. And when the lake is like glass, you can see the team out there rowing. And they're most successful when they're doing it completely synchronized. But if you can imagine the visual of one of the guys or the girls out there drilling a hole in the boat when the team isn't looking, what would that do to their overall success? Well, obviously, you know, the boat would take a lot and it'd be harder to row and it would really compromise their success.
Right.
Um, I learned as a kid, I'll use a hockey example, he was mad. This was a, a league team, like elite good hockey players, and he was mad that he wasn't getting playing time. And all the kids on the team had these experiences, one at a time, and then sometimes in whole groups, where they'd get on the ice and they were all falling. They'd start to put their, their skate onto the ice and they'd fall. And these weren't kids that typically fell very often. And then they'd get off and they'd look at their skates and they'd examine their blades and they had chips out of their blades. And at first they're like, well, maybe I stepped on something metal. I didn't even realize it. Um, turned out, the kid that was mad about his playing time was taking a tool to his teammate's blades in the locker room and rocking them, so that they either had to go off and get their backup blades or maybe their backup blades were also damaged, so then they couldn't skate at all because if your blades aren't working, you can't play. And it was discovered that legitimately he was attempting to drill a hole in the boat, he will. He was trying to dam, and he was damaging blades, so that his teammates didn't look good. So that team was in crisis. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
So whatever caused that kid to feel like he didn't have a voice, to go to his coach and say, hey, in a productive way, like, I really feel like I'm working hard enough to be playing more shifts, he couldn't do that, didn't feel like he could do it. And he went to an extreme and tried to harm his teammates by damaging their blades. So this is what I'm talking about. We are a team. And when we're all rowing in that same direction, we can often have way more success. And we don't want someone drilling holes in the boat when we're not looking, or even when we are looking. Okay, so let's take a look at what M A S B says a team is and see how this definition compares to your personal definitions that you kindly shared. A team is a group of people with different backgrounds, skills, personalities, and styles. So that's the individual piece, so I think that's a match. With a common purpose, you said that, common goal, common purpose, common end, working in the same direction, who work together to a clear, to achieve clearly identified goals. Okay, so let's read it again. A group of people with different backgrounds, skills, and personalities and styles. With a common purpose, who are working together to achieve clearly identified goals or identified goals. What's different about this? We saw what's the same. I think what's same is the obvious. What's different, what wasn't in our definition?
Clearly identified.
Clearly identified, yeah. Does that matter at a school board, school district?
Yes.
Yeah, it does. So we're gonna talk a lot about why that's super important today. You nailed the different personality, skills, backgrounds, and styles. Kim, a lot of what you've said really nailed that key component. Common purpose was universal. You all said goals, but this took it a step further and said clearly defined. Okay, and then Simon Sinek, one of my favorite researchers' personalities. He says a team is not a group of people that work together, so he goes the totally other direction. It's a t- team is a group of people that trust each other. And so that is really tricky, trust. The example I gave of the skate blades being damaged, they did not trust each other on that team. And when they had bad games, you could hear them yelling at each other in the locker room. That was a team in crisis. That was a team that was lacking quality leaders. That was a team that was lacking clearly identified goals. That was a team that was missing voice and safety and trust, mostly trust. Trust is this thing. It's the most valuable thing. It's often the elephant in the room. It's the thing we all talk about. It's kind of hard to describe, but you know it when you have it. And there's all kinds of definitions of trust. I came across one of my quotes that I collected. It was about a quote, and I'm gonna get it wrong, which will give you the gist of it, was "A bird doesn't trust that the tiniest branch it lands on will hold its weight. It trusts that if the branch breaks beneath its feet, he has the strength or she has the strength to fly away." So trust isn't in that example given to others. It's kept within that bird's self. Does that bird have the ability to fly away to avoid danger? So if that branch breaks, it can leave safely. Some people say trust is completely in the other person. I trust you completely, bless you, to not break my heart. But really, at the end of the day, who's the only person you control on this planet? So, yourself. You know, in li- in, in littles world and elementary education, I always said the greatest gift we can give our littles when they go to middle school is that their inner voice is positive, that their inner voice says, I'm enough. I'm good at school. I'm smart. I'm capable. I'm able. I can do hard things. I can overcome challenges. If we can cause students to feel in that inner voice that they are enough and that they can, they will. And that's the greatest gift. So it becomes this notion of, you know, what is trust and why is it so darn important? And it's sometimes hard to define, depending on your lens and perspective, but we all know it when we have it. And we know it when we don't. And when it comes to team, even a team like this, not the Detroit Lions, not the U of M team. We give, sports is such a beautiful example of these things because they're teams and we see them as teams or called teams. We refer to them as the team, but we know it when they're successful. Are the Lions in, in a situation where they have trust right now?
Yes.
Yes, in each other, in Dan Campbell, in their general manager, in their community, all of these things. And, but we know what it felt like when there wasn't trust.
Right.
Right? That was the whole rest of our life, right? So trust is key. So I would like to put in the room, as we move forward, that we remember that you all are a team, including the two members or one member that is not able to join us today. And that when we recognize that it's okay to be our best selves when we're here, that we're not checking our backgrounds, we're not checking our lenses, we're not checking who we are because we're on the team. We're bringing our whole selves. But that at the end of the day, we are here doing this work because we have a common purpose. We want to row together. We don't want anyone drilling holes in the boat when we're looking or not looking. But we need to know what is it that will be our, our success criteria? Well, it will be if we achieve our clearly identified goals. And in order to do this, we have to recognize the lens that Simon Sinek brings, which is the linchpin of all of this is trust. Hard to define, but we know it when we have it. And recognize that you're dynamic people. Remember the sheep scale at the beginning? Some of you were just making it. Some of you were tired. Some of you were content. That's dynamics, always moving, always changing. So it's normal that in a team that you're going to go through stages. Now, a lot of you've seen this, especially if you live in education, this is not new information. But it is useful to bring into the room that normal group development starts when you form. And when you go through election cycles for school boards and new people join or people leave midterm and you have to appoint new members, the dynamics of the team change at the school board level, even when one person is new. So even though you might have visited this before, we're at a unique point in time today. So it's always worthwhile to revisit it and remind ourselves. When you're in the forming stage, there's no clear viewer purpose yet. And there's no clear understanding of the contribution to the value chain, like how do you contribute to our success, to our work? Sometimes, we get to this, normal, norming. People aren't getting along. They have different viewpoints. It can be power struggles. They sometimes wonder if they're having, um, valuable contributions to the group. Seeking clarity on team goals and vision. They're trying to find their way, trying to find their purpose. But today, we started together when you talked about your why. So right away, we've established that there's meaning and purpose to your work. You all have it. You had a unique view, but you also had a common view at the same time. And so it's nor- it's normal that you sometimes are in the storming stage. When we get to norming, we all have a shared under- understanding and agreement on our values and how we do our business. There's understanding, um, in each of the roles on the team. And everybody understands their individual responsibilities within the context of the team. And then when we're really good, we're performing. We're aligned, we understand, we're connected. The values and norms are there, and it allows for healthy conflict and collaboration. And that disagreement is perfectly fine. We're respectful of each other. We're thinking about issues, not about people. And, um, this is where we seek to be. Now, what do you notice about the arrows, the colorful arrows at the top? Where are they all headed? Same direction. Is it possible for them to go backwards, though?
Yeah.
A hundred percent. So theoretically, we want us to start the new team figuring this out. This doesn't have to be negative necessarily, although often it is. We get to this point and then ultimately we're seeking to be a performing team, just like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. The further we go up the pyramid, the more self-actualized we are, the more productive we are. So it's a, it's a similar piece. So questions, thoughts? Where would you put your team on this scale?
Stormy.
Okay, you put yourself at stormy right now? Okay, so you're experiencing some power struggles? Seeking to understand the value of your individual and collective contribution? And you're seeking clarity of the team goals and the vision and maybe even finding meaning and purpose? Has this board ever been where you would describe yourselves as in one of these areas? When was that?
Six months ago.
Okay, so not that long ago? Okay, not that long ago. Were all of you the same members or did you get new people in January?
New people.
How many new? One?
November.
November, okay. All right, so our goal, so that I'm being transparent, is to help you today. I appreciate your honesty. And so sometimes we just have to accept the current state as it is what it is and then try to find a path to move forward. So our goal will be to help us to understand our roles and responsibilities as school board members and recognize that we are a team, so that we can start to build that trust and that common set of goals that are clearly defined. And that you realize and remember that this work is complicated. But when we are clear on who does what, what lane we're in, uh, it gets a little easier. It's never easy, but it'll get a little easier. Any other thoughts on the Tuckman's five stages of group development there? Storming, forming, norming, and performing. Anybody have any additional thoughts that you'd like to put in the room?
I think it's, uh, uh, I'll agree with Mr. Gray. Um, it's storming right now. Not to say it, it couldn't move forward quickly, but, um, petty conflict. Over petty things.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's what I see. Things that have nothing to do with the district.
Okay, okay. So Fred's lens is that you're in the storming stage, but that it could be resolved and maybe not so terribly hard. And that it has to do, from his perspective, with things that are really having to do with the district. Agree, disagree?
I don't agree. Um, so for me, I don't feel like we were performing six months ago. I feel like we were just kind of going along. Um, so that's where that lies for me. Um, I don't think that the conflict at this point is necessarily not related to the district or petty. I think the conflict is related to the district, but I think the conflict lies in not having clear defined goals.
Okay, okay.
So, and I think that in the storm, some things have become personal. And maybe that's what Fred means when he says, like, it's not related to the board. And I'm not trying to speak for Fred when I say that. Um, but I, I, I do agree with Fred in the, the sense of we can move forward. We should be able to move forward because we all are here, are wise.
Yeah, you heard him. You said him. You thought about him. You wrote them. You shared them out loud today. So you do have common purpose, and this is not unusual. You're asked to do really hard things. So this is not about making you mad about yourselves. You're really tasked with some difficult stuff right now. And it is, that's your reality. So the question becomes, you all have good hearts. You're here for good reasons. You have shared purpose of why you want to serve on the board. We're hopefully remembering and realizing and recalling that you're in fact a team and that you can move forward. We can move from this space forward. I can tell you right now, I already can tell that you share respectfully your views, even if they're not the same. Lana?
Well, I just want to add, you know, since everybody agreed that we're in a stormy stage, you know, we have to learn that it's okay to disagree. And when you disagree with somebody, you don't have to go out and do something because they did something. You don't have to re-attalate. You know, you just, if the board made a decision, the board made a decision instead of coming back and saying, I'm gonna do this because they did this.
Yes, and that is really important and really hard at the same time. But if the board collectively makes a decision and you're on the board, but it wasn't what you thought the decision should be, you are on the team. And whether or not your voice is the one that was heard or your values were the ones that had a match to that decision, as an individual, you have to recognize that now the board's made a decision, you're a part of that board, and you should do your best to support it and to move forward from there. Because when you go out, and I don't know what the details are and I don't need to know, but if you go out and you try to do something else as a result of you're drilling a hole.
Right.
To use that reference, and we'll refer back to that. So, okay, we're in the storming stage and you feel like, just for my own clarity, you feel like the board, that is the five of you and then, um, Melody? Missing two. So the five of you plus the two board members that are not here, you feel like the seven of you are in the storming stage. I don't mean the whole system, but I mean you as the governance board. Yes, okay, fair enough. Let's see what we can do about it, because by the end of our, oh dear.
I think when you wrote on it, wrote on it.
Yes, so I just got used to box lights.
By the way, that is really a nice piece of equipment there.
It is.
Very nice.
Okay, so by the end of our time together at noon, I want you to leave this session being reminded of what is our unity of purpose and what are your roles? And what are your roles and responsibilities as board members? So first, unity of purpose. The unity of purpose is a common focus, superordinate goals, the values, beliefs of the governing body members share in common about children. We know that, you've already talked about that. The school district and public education. That help them to transcend their individual differences and fulfill a greater purpose. So I'm hoping that you realize, and that the work we're gonna do together over the next period of time, helps you to realize that you are a team. You are here for a unifying purpose. And that it's helpful for that team to be efficient and effective. When you have a common focus, you recognize what your goals are and that they're clearly defined. That you have common viewpoints and beliefs, values around children, your school district and public education as a whole. That you're doing such great work that you can transcend your individual difference, differences to find your way forward out of that storming stage. The other piece, and this is, we're gonna spend a ton of time, because the way we get to that unity of purpose, so that you can transcend your individual differences and you can find your way forward, is through clear understandings of your roles and responsibilities as board members. Effective teams value and respect their essential roles. They come to common understanding on the roles of the board and the superintendent, and they strive to operate within them. Okay, so they value and respect their essential roles. They come to a common understanding of the roles of the board and the superintendent, and they strive to operate within them. In other words, you're gonna learn what is the board's responsibilities, and what is the superintendent's responsibilities, and how do the two work together? And when we get in and dig into the heart of this content, I'm gonna ask you to pay a lot of attention to the verbs and the statements. Because the verbs and the statement are either strong, or they're somewhat passive. And when they're strong, that person or that board takes the lead in that area. And when they're passive, it's more of a supporting role. And when it's the opposite way, it's the opposite way. Somebody takes the lead, somebody supports, the other person takes the lead, the other supports. Because as a board of education, who is your only employee?
Superintendent.
The superintendent. And then through his team, the administrative team, his central office team, the building leaders, the staff, the faculty, the paraprofessionals, transportation maintenance, custodial, the whole crew follows through to John, your superintendent. And then the board has its own set of responsibilities. And we're gonna really go through defining what they all are. Because when we know what our part is in the organization, we know where we're supposed to be rowing, and we do that really well. Then that allows John to do his part really well, and to hold his team accountable for doing their parts really well. And the system works better and more efficiently. That's the goal of this. Those are the learning targets, if you will. Okay. So the National Association of Board of Educations, this association says that the role of the board is to do five things. Is to set the direction of the school district, ensure accountability is built in, establish structures, demonstrate community leadership, super important, demonstrate community leadership, and develop positive relationships. I have worked with a school board, or some school board, but one that's coming to mind particularly, where they're demonstrating leadership for not-so-good things. They actually yell at each other, on camera. Throw pens, yell, terrible. And you can think you're going along fine, and then all of a sudden, the pen gets thrown, and off they go. Now, they don't agree at all on a lot of things. And things have gotten quite personal. And they're having a really hard time finding their way forward. Okay? We're not there. You're all very respectful. You might not all have the same perspective, but you can kindly, respectfully disagree. That's what I've noticed, that's what I feel, that's the vibe, that's the whole thing. So you're in a pretty darn good place, especially where you're tackling what you're tackling right now. So remember, though, that the community's watching. They elected you, they believe in you, they want you here. And they believe that you will do good things for kids in their community. So it's really important that you recognize that one of the essential goals of a school board member and the school board collectively is to demonstrate community leadership. It's super, super important. And then, of course, setting the direction, ensuring accountability, and establishing structures are very important, too. That's the National Association. And then, we're gonna start to get into the nitty-gritty. So we are at about an hour in. This is where the meat of the workshop starts to begin. And there are a lot of them. Okay, so there are a lot of roles and responsibilities and categories that we're gonna examine. And what I want to point out to you is that they're always gonna be presented with a superintendent's role for this area, and the board of education's role for this area. And we're gonna, we are going to dig in and go through each area carefully. And this is where I want you to carefully find the verbs. And to start to really look at, who's the lead and who's the supporting role? The lead and the supporting role. And I'm gonna give you some handouts, too, at the end of this portion, that will help you. Do you keep, is all of your board minutes, agendas, is it all electronic? Or do you keep a hard copy binder of anything?
We keep the binder, too.
You do? I would highly recommend that you put a three-hole punch, and I should have put three-hole punches in it. And that you put these two handouts that I'm gonna give you today in there. They're such great, quick references. So you're, you could be sitting in a board meeting and think, "Oh, my gosh, what are we talking about?" "Oh, yeah, that's vision and values. Who does what?" And go back to your document and take a look. This is a budget issue. Who's the lead, who's not the lead? Like, really know your role and responsibility. So we're gonna dig into that. Does anybody need a break? Yes, no? You're good?
I'm just wondering how there's enough donuts for the entire board in this bag that Fred bought.
He's proud of you. Okay, okay, so we'll keep going, and I'll do a checking in about a half hour and see if you need a break then. Because we'll be at about the hour and a half mark.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so vision and values is one of the key pieces and areas that a board of education has impact on. So does the superintendent, so who does what? All right, so for vision and values of the school district, the superintendent's role, let's read it together. Support, assist the board in the process of developing the vision. Including recommending a process for vision creation, gathering stakeholder input on community values and core beliefs. Advising the board on vision creation and testing, and ensuring implementation of a communication plan. And then on this side, the board's role is to adopt and communicate a clear, shared vision of what the organization is trying to achieve that reflects high expectations for quality teaching and student learning, while incorporating the values and core beliefs of the community. Great, so what are the verbs? On this side, we've got support and assist. And on this side, we've got adopt and communicate. Which is stronger?
The board.
The board's side. So in this area, vision and values, if we're thinking about your role as a board of education, you take the lead. Your job is to adopt and create, communicate a clear, shared vision. No, you're not doing it in a vacuum. You're doing it in collaboration, conjunction with your superintendent. And by superintendent, we mean his team as well. And he will, and along with his team, support and assist you, the board, in the process of developing the vision for your system. Do you have an intact strategic plan for Wayne Westland Community Schools? Do you have a strategic plan?
We do have one, but it's on the board. Yeah, we have.
You do? Do you have a mission? Vision? Belief statements? Okay, that's, that's your existing vision. And then we take it a step further. We, the vision, mission, belief statements, are typically things that go together, that define and determine who it is that we are as Wayne Westland Community Schools. Okay? And you would have had to adopt this, adopt this at some point. And you want to make sure that that's a lead in how you communicate with your community on a regular basis. So you wouldn't have done that in a vacuum. Do you, is that in your binder, like, right at the beginning? The mission, vision, and belief statements of Wayne Westland Community Schools?
The mission and vision is...
Yeah.
It's on the back.
Oh, it's on the back. So you might ask to find the vision, and if you have belief statements, you might want to add that. And people think, "Oh, that sounds silly." No, it's not silly. Can I, can I read that?
Sure.
Thank you. "The Wayne Westland Community Schools, in cooperation with parents and the community, will educate and prepare all of our students to be knowledgeable, responsible, contributing members of a global society." And usually, the vision is shorter. It's often a marketing tool piece that's shorter, maybe in one sentence. Sometimes it's not even a sentence, it's a phrase. So that's something you want to make sure that you know well, and that it's something that's in the forefront. And if it needs revising and up-to-date revisions, then that's something you can kind of put on your to-do list. Okay, so far, so good with this? Goal setting, super, super important. Because we said one of the things about the definition of team that might be missing in our personal definitions was clearly defined goals. Okay, so in the area of goal setting, which is a very important thing that a school board does and a school district has in place, we have the two sides. The superintendent assists and advises the board in creating long- and short-term goals that are aligned to the vision. He establishes a plan for the district-wide implementation, and periodically reports progress to the board and the community. From the lens of the board in the area of goal setting, their job is to ensure that district vision is translated into long- and short-term goals. You see to it that resources and systems are aligned to the goal attainment. And then you hold the system accountable for achieving or working towards those goals. So the verbs are assist and advises, or ensure. Which is stronger? The board ensures. And annually, you engage in a goal-setting process. Did you do that in August or July? So that's something that you might want to put on your to-do list. To engage in this annual goal-setting process. You set goals for your superintendent. Do you have a November or a January superintendent evaluation?
Typically, typically, yes.
Okay. So typically, when you write your goals for your superintendent, they are a match to your annual goals that you set as a board. And typically, the guiding document that really aligns all of it over a three-to-five-year plan is a strategic plan. And it really sets the framework and foundation for where we're putting our energy, what are our priorities and values. And all of that is arrived at by engaging the stakeholders in the process. And then you have a process through which you know what are you trying to achieve, long-term and short-term? What are the steps quarterly that you need to achieve in order to get to that long-term goal? And then it helps to hold the system accountable. Sometimes, things happen, and they throw the system for a loop. I think that's where you're at right now. And so, it's helpful to get through those unexpected challenges when you know what your goals are, short and long-term. And they're beyond survival, right? Okay. So again, I want to emphasize, the verbs are very important. If you have a highlighter, or a pencil, or a pen, I recommend even underlining them. So goal setting is really, at the end of the day, the board's responsibilities. But it's so important that there's a trusting collaborative team environment between the board and the superintendent, and in this case, Wayne Westland, his team. And that it isn't done in a vacuum. Okay? Questions about goal setting? Make sense? Okay. All right, policy? Policy. So you have a board manual, right? With policy and procedures. And it's on the website, right? And usually, these are big-picture things. I recently was told that, you know, when you go to a conference, or a, something that takes you off-campus, if you will. You're going to a conference or a meeting, and you have to drive to it, you get mileage for it. But that was in the board policy. Things that specifically typically aren't in board policy, they're usually bigger-picture kinds of things. And then, the forms and the details are often figured out by the administrative team. But you really want to know about policy because you set policies. Do you have a policy committee?
Yeah.
Okay, who's on the policy committee?
Most of them.
Most of you?
It has just been reset.
Right.
Okay.
We just had our organizational meeting this week.
That's what I was gonna say. Usually, in January, boards do their organizational meetings. And you identify who's serving and what committee, and what everybody's roles are. And so there's awesome opportunity here and gathering for you to get things on track, right? So let's take a look at policy. Let's read through this. "The superintendent's role is to advise the board on policy development, the need and impact of policy, to support the board in implementation of policy, the policy review schedule and the protocols. And it is the responsibility for creating and implementing administrative procedures that carry out the requirements of each policy." So the policies are bigger, arching topics. And then the superintendent and his or her team decide the details, the nitty-gritty, the day-to-day operational side of things that make sure the policies are being adhered to. So advises, he advises. "The board develops and adapts policies for the district that is consistent with current law and aligned to the district vision. Creates and implements a schedule and protocol for policy review, and assures that the superintendent has developed those administrative procedures that are aligned with board policies." So this is where, these are really hard, because the law's always changing, things are always changing. Do we expect you, as your whole dynamic selves, to know everything about the law and policy? Do we expect you to know everything about the law and board policy? No. Where would you get the nitty-gritty detail? Where would you go to to get, where does that committee on policy go to? To get the current and most up-to-date information about what's being passed in Lansing? What are changes to the law? What's that?
Shouldn't be coming soon.
The superintendent, yes? What else?
M A S B.
M A S B, all those professional organizations.
Wayne Reesaw.
Wayne Reesaw, your I S D. Where else would you get updates from? Those are good ones.
Our lawyers.
Yes. The district's attorneys, that are experts in school law and changes to school law and policy. So nobody expects you to know this all. And to have, but we, we want you to know where you have access to get it when you need it. And it is your job as a board of education to make sure that your policy is consistent with current law and aligned with the district vision. And then, of course, you're not doing this by yourself, you're not doing it in a vacuum. You're doing it in conjunction with your superintendent and his team, and your collective team, your extended team, your district-retained attorneys and firms that, that help to guide and support your relationships with the local I S D, in this case, Wayne Reesaw. At any associations like M A S B, there's a whole law section of M A S B where you can get information as school board members individually. You can take certified board member classes on school law, school finance. We provide all kinds of resources for you to educate yourselves. Because you come from different lenses and different professions. And you can't possibly know all the things. And one of the most complicated things is how schools are funded. And it's really hard to know all the details. You could work in the field for 27 years, and they enter you something else, you're like, "What?" And you have to keep learning. So we don't expect you to know it all, but we expect you to know how to get the information when you need it. And to make sure the information is being gotten. And that the things that are adopted are consistent with current law. But most importantly, also aligned with the vision and the mission and the values and all of those things. So far, so good? Yes, I see you guys getting tired. I was thinking about a break. So we'll get through the educational program, and then I'm gonna give you one of the handouts. And then I think that'll help us rev up, and we'll take a little break. So the educational program, arguably one of the most important things, because why does a school district exist to begin with? To educate the kiddos, right? And to be a source of resources for the community. And every day, every year that passes, schools become the hubs of communities more and more and more. How many people saw, see the Whirlpool commercial now on TV? And it talks about the statistic that, I don't know what the percentage is. X number of students have difficulty accessing clean clothes, and therefore have difficulty not wanting to come to school because they don't have clean clothes. So Whirlpool is partnering with school districts to provide what? Washers and dryers, and where are they putting them?
In the schools.
In the schools. Right?
We actually have one in one of our schools.
Yeah, we have one at John Glenn, uh, from a donation from the Wayne City.
Yes.
In Exfield.
Yes, and so this is what I'm talking about. More and more and more, our schools are being asked to be hubs, homes, everything.
Yes.
And so now even Whirlpool is donating washers and dryers to schools so that children can have access to clean clothes, so that they're not wanting to miss because they're embarrassed or they feel like they can't show themselves. Add that to food service programs, right? You know, during COVID, we were even feeding kids during the summertime, right? And families. Communities have backpack programs for students that have a special need, where they can take backpacks home for the weekend filled with nutritious foods to help sustain them in the evenings and over the weekends. Washers and dryers. Sometimes schools, and I, I believe Wayne Westlake has a school where they have medical facility present. The traveling dentist, right? That goes into schools. Vision screenings, hearing screenings from the county that come into school districts and make sure children are getting screened. Can they see? Can they hear? Um, and then, of course, we know that their teachers, their principals, their paraprofessionals provide love and support in addition to teaching them how to read and write and do math and learn social studies and science. And so as you start to think about all of those things, the shift over the past couple of decades and even over the last few years into what we ask our schools to do in the public sectors is huge. It's huge. Children coming to us that don't speak English as their first language, right? And all of the support that we're providing to them. Students from families that don't have, um, the financial means that other students have. And do we have a significant population of those students, and do they qualify for Title I funding, Title IV funding, and all of the things? And so the educational program is a comprehensive program that we have to keep in mind. We ask schools to be a lot of things. Okay, so the superintendent's role is to establish standards consistent with state law, district vision, and goals. He or she recommends courses of study, texts, assessments, instructional resources, outlines, standards, develop systems to ensure effective delivery of the educational program, monitors for efficacy, and provide student assessment data for board and community consideration. So we are definitely talking about teaching and learning in the very traditional sense of reading, writing, math, science, social studies, all of those things. We're also talking about curriculum for social emotional learning. We're also talking about curriculum for making students, sure students feel safe in their environment. So not just safe from a physical standpoint, but that's huge too, right? Do we have the booths that lock our doors? Do we have secure entrances? Do we have buttons under desks that alert into the police stations and to the local authorities if they have a crisis and things aren't safe? Um, so we're talking about that safety, okay? But we're also talking about the social emotional safety. Are we seen as individuals and respected as individuals? So this is really comprehensive, it's really huge. And then on this side, the board's responsibility is to ensure that the district has established standards consistent with state law and district vision and goal. That you approve recommended curriculum, texts, assessments, and instructional resources aligned with standard. And that you regularly review and evaluate the performance of the system and what relates to the educational program delivery and then ultimately student achievement. Okay, look at the verbs. You tell me. What do you see?
Establishes, recommends, develops. Assures, monitors, provides, and then for the board assures, rules, evaluates.
Yes, thank you, Cam. So on the board's side is to establish, recommend, monitor. And then on the board's side, ensure, approve, evaluate, review. What do you make of that? Who's the lead there?
Superintendent.
The superintendent takes the lead there, in his team, in this case. Right? But your role as the board is really important too. I always tell boards that I work with, you have a superpower. It's to ask questions. A board member's superpower is to ask questions. If you don't understand something, ask. If you want more information, ask for it. If you think you should be presented with additional data, ask for it. You don't have to be pressured by timelines necessarily. If you don't feel like you have enough to make a decision, that's okay. Ask for more information. But at the end of the day, you are 100% correct that in this area, which is the biggest area of all, the educational program, what we deliver to students, where the rubber meets the road, what is the purpose of the system? To educate the children. It's the superintendent and their team that has the lead, and the board is in a supporting role. So it's important for you to realize that. And remember when we talked about policy, nobody expects you to know everything? Because it would be impossible to know everything, but that you know where to get the things you need when you need them. This is where the superintendent, because this is the educational program, is the educator. Now, you're, you're lucky you have an educator at the table for your board of education, but not everybody does. Sometimes in school boards where I've worked, you know, in some of the rural communities, there's farmers and veterinarians and nurse anesthetists and local business owners and stay-at-home parents, and they make up the board. None of them are educators. Now, arguably, all parents are educators, right? Because they're the first educator of their child, and maybe the vastly most important one. But you get the drift from a professional standpoint. So this is where that trust comes in, because it isn't just trust here amongst you on this team, but it's trust amongst your greater team, with your superintendent, your employee, and then his team. And they're the professional educators, they're the ones that went to school for it and have committed their careers for it, and so they are the experts, if you will, and you support. Now, that doesn't mean you don't ask questions, you don't dig in, and you don't know. Of course you do. But this is where that trust goes. So the first few were really the board's leading and the superintendent's supporting, all in collaboration, but this is where it shifts a little bit. This is where it shifts a little bit. There's plenty more to do. But I can see that people need a little bit of a break, and so I'm going to pass this out to you. And we'll take a look at it after the break. But this is what I call the best cheat sheet around, around the roles of the superintendent and the roles of the board of education. And you're, you're sitting present, right? It's really, do additional copies for your colleagues that aren't here. Yep.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay. So this is a nice front and back document, and it's not a total perfect crosswalk, it's an additional resource. But I love the front, because it bullet points the role of the superintendent and then the role of the board, and it is beautifully cross-walked to this presentation. But, um, if you look here, that the superintendent and the board on the back, there's a, a shorter version, and of course you have the hard copy of the paper case too, to refer to. That's okay. This is a helpful guide, and we'll revisit this after the break. But let's take a little break, let's get people moving. We're at almost the halfway point. So let's take about a 10-minute break until back around 10:30, if you will, and then you can check your phones and use the restroom and get a little stretch.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't, like, you gotta tell me to bring a blanket. I ain't gonna be able to enjoy the game tomorrow because I'm cold today. Oh, no, did somebody got a combed-in?
Let me give you this.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry about that. I ain't even chill-gating, I'm cold.
Mommy, you grab your jacket around your shoulders.
It's my lid.
Mommy, you grab it.
No, I, I, I did it. I did it. I wanted to go outside and be cold. Hey, Cam.
I'm well. I'm waiting on Dan Curry to come off of us.
Oh, it's only one person?
That is.
In this section, yes.
You can go.
Oh, I thought it already.
Brett, say her name, please.
I know, I know, I forgot. Where's the people stays to work to, as long as I?
If you don't put on those shoes, your wife will back you to work, huh?
I know, I did our integrity.
How you doing? Yeah, I want a coffee. I want a coffee. I got no coffee. I might hit the teeth. Is it? Oh, see, I'm not the only one.
Order the pizza.
I don't know if we saw that, uh, we didn't even know Monday.
She's going to turn it off.
Oh, yeah. I don't like it. I thought I smelled it. Sure, yep. And first, we can't do that. Yeah, my son, uh, especially once, he's not walking, yeah. It's not for others. Nothing wrong with it, he's just not, he's just not walking. Which is technically part of the open.
I don't know if I can say that in your mom's.
He talks about, uh, he wanted to play in the NFL, he was poor. It just started, watched the big, his name is, he stands it, there are a lot of religious stuff that has started, but it's only about a manager's years.
I know.
I don't, I can't share it here, so, because I wanted to share.
I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I kind of forgot which order. Do you have other numbers?
It's a quote book, uh, and it has it on every, like, word. So the, like, character, they'll have, like, three pages of quotes. And, uh, from politicians to athletes. I used to use it because I was coaching linebackers at Easton, I always started my meetings with their quotes. And so I would see, like, what does our team mean? And I would, and I'd be all, it's a quote, and it was humility. Correct, yeah, I'm big on that. Yeah, I am too, I, I have loved quotes, I love, but they have to have people. So, well, I listen to the press. No one else is here. Yeah, well, if you go, we want to have four. You can't go anywhere. I just told Julie that, I said, no one can leave.
Make sure everybody is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as long as we don't lose anybody else, we can still open that.
Okay. Yeah, it's, anything, uh, just standing, just to communicate with people. You know, obviously, any agenda, if you have questions you need answered, that's the whole purpose. People don't want, they don't have to have it.
There's always great people that we go back to.
Especially now, it's great time. Not to be, right now, it's great time. Yeah, but eat your muffin or whatever you got. Now's the best time to do it. And they're, I, they'll pull out snacks, I think Miss Emily, she'll do it. So, and, and now, Miss Scott, the next, it's a hard time. So you sit in the toilet. I'm going to watch. If you don't have an stop, we'll be calling you out. You are not.
I know.
Yeah, exactly. Because this is the third time you've said something to me about you.
I, I am, I'm like, written, no.
You don't know. Yeah, you got to remember, I have, I have three kids, two that are the same age.
Throw a husband in that.
A husband and three kids.
Do you see my oldest, who had two weddings? That was March, March, he loves the handout.
I mean, that's not the diet you're supposed to go on.
Yeah, he does, apparently, just for the booze. I can share a little bit of that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's top forever. And then I'll just try again. I don't think you're good for it. And then just stop. One little rating, I think I'm over, I'm done. I've done it all.
Thank you. So, I'm excited for you to do a dance meet.
I shattered my daughter's heart, yes, with Jefferson. I was telling her that I was, I was excited to have the opportunity. You know, it does mean, right? They can know, I'm noting. You know what I mean?
And it's, it's good.
Are you going to, can you, she was like, yeah. So I first one, my first one was South, South Rep. Session initially last. But the one that Russell Debbie couldn't really schedule it, because she was going to get stuck. You know what I mean with that? So that's fun, it's a lot of work. So we were doing it together, and we were still accelerating together, but she was going to do an info session for the door administrators. And I was going to follow time. Yeah. Yes.
Hey, hey, what's going on?
Hurry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're going through, I thought she said she was gonna email Jennifer, but I haven't seen anything. I actually put on a text her today, where I made her justify the fact. Because I thought she was gonna. Yeah.
And I said, I, I would love to do it, but it's two, and two hours and fifteen minutes going away. And I need to go there, I think towards five thirty, I don't have time.
To get this, your travel time, so much of your time is eaten up in travel.
Right, like, I don't, I can't take those days off of work. I mean, when you do it, like, I don't have any time left, because I, I meant to go to watch some play action.
Right, right, right.
So, it'll be fine, something else, but I just finished tail over fourteen.
Oh, nice.
There is Jackson, I have to, that was, that was fun. They have the Golden Bridge Theater, it was in the media center, like, half the day.
Yeah.
So I, I'm like, oh, let me get that. Can I see the dog?
Oh, yeah, I have to hear something, I thought I was gonna say the dog. Yeah, they were really funny.
So you tell me how to, must I take more dog in the park, I think it's a candy, air indifferent dog.
Oh, I can hear it.
And I can't get out of it, but I, but I was done, I'm, I'm bored. Like, I got there in the morning, and the dog is air, and just. Yes, it's, it's, but I'm not a dog person, so I'm not good at telling you what breed a dog is. But when I walked in, and the way the dog was laid out on the floor, and the air looked at me, and I was like, we're kindred spirits right now. Like, this is what, no, I'm feeling him, or her, it's her, it's like, I'm feeling her right now, I just wanna lay out like this.
Her, um, and Dad worked at Dear Monique's, that's what I remember.
Oh, wow, okay. Wow. As I say, it's such a small, and, and especially. Yes, and I keep watching, because he, John said, there's a dog park, and then there's a, and there's all these dogs. Yeah, my family jokes that when I die, hopefully what I have in my head will be all the dogs.
I am evil as a trained therapy dog. I'm never proud to her for it, but we, we redo her license every year, but she actually has now been trained anymore, she hasn't been trained for a number of years, so.
I have the Golden Bridge Theater, but she was severely ill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been there forever, but it was like a.
Who do you watch, Megan?
Yeah, I don't know, she's just gotten.
Do you watch Megan?
For a couple of years.
Well, I wrote. So I do that in addition to.
Hey, so, I just ask because I used to work at a store, and I think my assets. Yeah, I would like. I mean, I would give you more, maybe just for working at a store.
So much, they're such a nice group to work with.
All right, let's look at our time, yeah, we're, we're gonna go ahead and get started, we went a little over, that's okay. That's okay. It's nice to take a little break. Okay, so, um, if you could finish your thoughts, I would appreciate it, and we'll get back into the heart of the workshop. Okay, so, looking, uh, just briefly again, before we move on to the next slide, at the educational program, this is, in fact, the most important work that we do, because it is the reason that, uh, schools and districts exist, right? To educate the children in the community. And we talked about how the, the idea or the scope of the education is ever expanding in our communities. We use the example of the Whirlpool Initiative now, and putting washers and dryers in some schools to help students have access to clean clothes. We talked about the food service program, the social emotional, in addition to the traditional academics that are taught, to make sure that we're considering each student as their whole selves, a whole child, and making sure that they have that support. We also talked about the fact that in this area, the superintendent really takes the lead, and the Board of Education is in a very important role, but more of a supporting role. Okay, and we know that, because we're looking at the verbs, and how strong they are on either side of this description for the educational program. Okay, moving forward, we're gonna take, talk about employment, because school districts employ a lot of people. In fact, the vast majority of a school district's budget is people. Okay? Uh, different from, like, Ford Motor Company or GM, right? The most, the biggest piece there is, uh, the people, because we know that the people are the ones that make up our schools, and make the difference, and make things actually happen. But from the perspective of the school board, they employ, you employ one employee, uh, and that is your superintendent, and then, of course, he and his team, or she and her team, depending on the system, uh, create the systems for hiring the rest of the team and the faculty, and all the people that make things go in a district. So the superintendent acts as the board's agent in implementing the district vision. They work toward beating district and performance goals established by the board. They manage and oversee all district operations. They work collaboratively with the board to ensure effective governance, and they engage in ongoing and meaningful professional growth opportunities. And the board hires a qualified superintendent. They establish clear performance expectations. They work collaboratively with the superintendent to ensure effective school district governance, and they evaluate the performance of the superintendent annually. So let's use the same strategy that we've been using to approach each of those areas of responsibilities. What are the verbs that you see? On the superintendent's side, what do you see?
Acts.
Acts as the board agent.
Works, manages, oversees, engages.
Yeah? So acts, works, manages, oversees, engages, okay? And then, on the board's side, what do you notice?
Hires, establishes, works, evaluates.
Yeah, hires, establishes, works, and evaluates. So what do you make of this? Lead, support, is it really a lead, support area? What do you, what do you think it is? Maybe it's a little different. I love it, for those of you that didn't hear, Kim said she thinks it's a balance. I agree. And trust is super important, as you're putting that into the room. So the boards, one of the big responsibilities of a school board is to hire their superintendent, and then evaluate their superintendent. And then to, also to ensure accountability in the system. That's a big state, with, ensure accountability in the system, and that's collectively. But then, once the superintendent is hired, he or she acts as the board's agent to implement the vision, because who established the vision?
Board.
The board.
The board.
And then the superintendent acts as the board's a, agent towards meeting district and performance goals. Who establishes the goals, the goal setting? Who's responsible?
The board.
You got it. But then, he or she manages and oversees all district operations, because the superintendent's the lead there. But they are doing it in collaboration with the board, so that they're an effective governance team. Trust is really important. And then, the superintendent also engages in ongoing and meaningful professional growth, because the system can't stay in one space, it has to keep moving forward. And then the board, once you hire your superintendent, it's not finished. Now you're gonna set performance expectations for that superintendent. You're gonna set the vision of the district. You're gonna set the goals annually for the district. And the superintendent, acting as your agent, is gonna go out and do that work. And then you're gonna hold that superintendent accountable through what process? And how often is that done?
Yearly.
Yearly. So it's this beautiful balance, when it's doing, when it's going well, right? When it's going well, there's a really nice balance, and when you know your role, and you, I hate the term, but it is very effective, stay in your lane, if you will, and you stay with your responsibility, and you do that as effectively, efficiently, as thoughtfully, and cleverly, collaboratively as possible, and everybody knows their role, things become a lot less muddy. So that's really one of the big learning targets for this work session, is to know the role and responsibility, and to revisit that unity of purpose. Okay, so far, so good? All right. Now, there's employment of not just the superintendent, but then the rest of the people that make up Wayne West High Community Schools, and we know that that's a large number of people, because you're a big system of schools. And you have a lot of students that you serve, how many students do you serve roughly?
Ninety-five hundred.
Wait, what? Ninety-five hundred?
Yes.
Ninety-four oh four.
There it is, ninety-four oh four. It's a lot of kids. How many elementarys?
One.
Six.
How many elementarys we at?
How many elementary schools? Five?
Five.
Ten? Ten elementarys.
Oh, y'all didn't say nothing when I said one.
How many middle schools?
Three.
Three, and then, two high schools, right? So you have four. Two comprehensive, two alternative. Okay.
So that's a lot of schools.
And all of those schools have leaders? Many of them have assistant principals. Many of them have counselors, social workers, teachers, office staff, custodial, maintenance, bus drivers, and transportation dispatchers, and the list goes on and on and on. You have the central office team, you have your superintendent, you have your assistant superintendent, you may have curriculum coordinators, you might have state and federal programs coordinators or directors, depending on the titles that you use. That's a lot of people, so how does that work then, with the superintendent and the board? How do you get all those people on board? Who has the roles and responsibilities in this area? Let's take a look, and let's focus on the verbs. The superintendent's role. The superintendent proposes employment policies to the board, so not just who, but the policies. Recommends all personnel to be hired. Is responsible either directly or indirectly for the performance evaluations of everyone that's hired. Ensures comprehensive professional development plans are in place for all staff, and that the employment practices are consistent with the law and the district's goals and vision. On the board's side, that's a lot, on the superintendent's side, that's a lot of stuff. On the board's side, the board adopts policies governing employment practices. You approve the salaries and the salary schedules. You approve if there's merit pay and what it is, what it looks like, how it works. The terms and conditions of employment, the fringe benefits that employees enjoy, whether they have leave options, professional development, and employee evaluations. And once again, all of that must be consistent with the law, and in line with the district's goals and vision. So let's look at the, let's use our same strategy for consistency's sake. What do you see about the verbs on either side? Who's willing to put themselves out there, as you have been about this one? We've got a team where to go to.
Who wants to read the verbs?
Yes, please.
So for superintendent, proposes, recommends, um, responsible, ensures.
Yeah.
Responsible's not in there, but is responsible.
It's, yeah, it's together, yeah. Okay? The board's side?
Adops.
Adops. That's the verb, right, and then a lot of other things. So what do you make of that category? We have the employment of the CEO that is the superintendent, and then we have the employment of everybody else that's the staff.
Right.
It's, it's still kind of a mix, though.
It is still kind of a mix.
As far as hiring and such, it's the superintendent, but as far as policy.
Yes. What would be the key ingredient to this being a mix that works well? The key ingredient, the elephant in the room, the thing you can hardly define sometimes, but you know when you have it, you know when you know?
Trust.
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 Super important. One of the very first school districts I ever worked with, in my role at M A S B, there was a board member, and they did not agree with or like the processes, the practices for employment. So here, how it says adopts policies governing employment practices. What I meant by that is, this person did not like that committees were used to choose who they were gonna hire. So, very, very, very common, you all know this, but just for the sake of the example, I'll give you the, what I'm referring to. So you're gonna hire a new school principal. You might have a screener interview, like, in person or virtual, where they ask some big overarching questions to see if there's an alignment with this person's values, experiences, backgrounds, and so on. And then, once they whittle that down for the screener interview process, they might bring five candidates in to interview in front of a large committee, and that committee would be made up of stakeholders. It could be parents, and students, and teachers, and office staff, and central office administrators, and a team, right? And then, from there, they might say, okay, these are our two best candidates, and then it might go to the superintendent, who might interview that candidate by themselves, or it could be the superintendent, and then the director of secondary education or elementary education, depending, and then, from there, they might even add in a presentation or something, some type of active piece where they have to present. And then they might even ask the person to take a structured, research-based interview, to see how they score in different categories. In other words, it's a long process to get hired in some of these positions, a lot of the time, not all the time, but a lot of the time. And so this board member couldn't stand that. They thought it was just a waste of time and a waste of resources. And they felt that their voice wasn't heard, so every single time, the director of personnel came before the Board of Education on an agenda item that said, we're gonna hire these positions, because the board has to approve the hiring of anybody, right? The person voted no. And so everybody that was getting hired was getting hired with this mixed vote of support. And the candidates that were being offered positions and being hired felt like they didn't have the board's support at all, and they wondered why, like, why do you not want me? What did I do? I just got here. I'm really excited to serve your community, and this board member kept voting no. And we were doing a self-evaluation, we'll talk about that a little later in our time together, and he said, well, I just think we're wasting resources, I hate the process, and I want the superintendent to know, and they won't listen to me. So I'm just gonna keep voting no. And I said, okay, fair, but is there a different way to communicate that and understand it, and maybe you don't understand why that's an important process, or maybe you have some valid points that the superintendent needs to hear, but just voting no, do you know that you're unintentionally telling these candidates that they're not wanted?
Right.
And in this competitive environment of trying to get teachers and leaders, and everyone's stealing from each other in terms of employees, you might not hate them, because of the very first experience they have with the Board of Education and the schools, that you don't want them, they might not say it. He's like, oh, I never thought about it that way, right? So, this is a balance of trust. This is a balance, peace. And it's really important to know where you sit in order for it to be balanced. Sometimes, in systems, board members think that they should really get into this, into the nitty gritty details. Now, if there's something really glaring, yeah, you should say something privately. But by and large, if there's trust in the processes, the policies, the individuals, when your superintendent or your HR person comes and says, these are our best candidates, we're thrilled to have them join our team, the idea is that you should hopefully trust them and support them.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So this just happened past Monday, so our HR director was telling us about a new hire in, um, but she's outside the district, and, you know, last time we talked as a board, you know, we was told that we gonna use the talent that we have interior, as opposed to going outside the district. use the talent that we have interior, as opposed to going outside the district. And so when I, when I was like, well, I'm sorry, I don't want to offend her, he said, well, she's not here. And I said, well, how, you know, did you come to this termination of picking her when I, when we was told that we was going to use the talent that we have? So that was just a level of trust that was broken.
Okay.
Because when you, what you call them, you know, we told one thing, we're going to use this talent.
Yep.
So we shouldn't even, if we're using this talent right here, why are we looking out there?
Right. And that's a valid question. If that is what was shared and that was the lens that was going to be used, and then they, a different lens was applied, my best advice, not knowing the details, nor do I need to know the details, is to use that superpower I talked about and to ask questions. So if you think about the timing of a board meeting, you get your packets in advance, and typically the agenda has all of the details. If you're thinking, huh, that's not a name I'm familiar with, or if they give a little bio in your board packet as to who the person is, depending on the position that's being hired, usually like some type of leadership roles will have a little bio there, or they, just so you know, with the person's background, um, you could ask questions at that point.
Right.
Before you're in front of the community and on, you know, video and those kinds of things you could ask, because that person might have valid reason. They might say, for example, this position is so important, and while we went to our internal talent first, we couldn't find what was needed and had to go outside, but please know we're still looking internally first and trying to utilize the talent we have at all costs, but when it becomes necessary, there might be occasions that there are exceptions. That could be the answer, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, that's a very good answer. You know, if that was shared with us, like in the packet or whatever, it would have made it a little different, because my whole thing was, I want to make this comment, but I don't want to hurt somebody, make you not feel like they want them.
Right, and that was very, very thoughtful of you to acknowledge that, because in my example, that board member was just voting no, and they were indeed unintentionally messaging that they didn't want them.
Right, right.
So that's why the timing of those board packets is so important. And so if you feel like, huh, that makes me feel like maybe I shouldn't trust what I've been told, that kind of interrupts that thought, lead with positive intent, because hopefully the trust exists, right, in that balance? And if it doesn't, all the more reason to ask the questions. But sometimes it's the timing and the framing of the questions that impacts the relationship also.
Okay, okay.
That's my best one. Yes.
Yeah, um, I happen to agree with the assessment, um, that Ms. Anthony Mitchell had shared, because the board was kind of blindsided with that. I don't think it was intentional, but you know, we're in a, we're in a boat now, we're moving people around in our history. And that was, again, the feeling.
Yes.
But then the response was, well, we want to hire the best. Well, we don't have the money to hire the best right now.
Okay, fair.
And you know, so there's, there are, you know, we, we can't get a board packet on Friday, now everybody's off all, all weekend, and, and then have a firm understanding on Monday night.
Sure.
As to, you know, what in the world's going on?
So.
I, I, you know, people have to be hired, people have to be.
Sure.
Uh, you know, moved around, whatever the case may be, that, that's up to the superintendent and his team. But, but that, that is something I think we have to work through.
Absolutely.
In our special time that we're in.
Agreed, and so I think that's important that you're bringing this forward, and they're really good questions, and once again, I'd like to point out, from the lens of somebody coming in that's new, you're doing it all very respectfully, you're, so you have so many good components going on here. I agree that if you feel like you're in a stormy state, that moving forward is a great possibility and in a short timeframe. So the, the superpower of asking the questions, I think, is important, so this is bringing up something, and you've got your team in the back here too, listening. So this is a place where additional conversation, additional framing and reasoning is needed. Kim, you want to say something?
I do, I, so I have a statement and a question.
Sure.
And just to say in full transparency where my struggle is, so I do ask a lot of questions. Sometimes that can, I'm going to say maybe jeopardize trust, because people feel like, why are you asking these questions? And so then it's like, well, you should ask the questions before the board meeting. However, my struggle with that is we represent the community. And so a lot of the questions that are asked are questions that the community has. And so when you don't ask those questions publicly, then the community walks away with their own version of the story, right? Because they don't have the answers that they're seeking. And right now, considering everything that's going on, transparency is very important to our community.
Agreed, yeah.
And so to ask those types of questions behind the scenes, even with that example that Lillana gave, like that was something that was said publicly. So everyone, the community, was expecting that that's what we're doing, now they see that we're not doing that. That was a valid question to me, to be asked publicly.
Sure.
Because everyone deserved to answer for that. But that's a struggle for me, is that piece of like, I'm not trying to put anyone on Front Street. However, I do have these questions.
Sure.
And sometimes, and I understand that things happen, but sometimes we don't get board packets in advance. So like in that situation, we didn't get that information until Monday. Well, the meeting is Monday night. So we just shared all of the things that we all do.
So then that's an opportunity for growth in the systems, that the timing of the board packets needs to be sooner, maybe in this period of time that you're going through, to the extent that is possible, because then it gives you the chance to comb through it and ask the questions. So I actually think there's a way to, to do both. So I think your point, Kim, is super valid about the community needing to hear that I, as their elected board member, am asking the questions so that they can hear the responses and have the full perspective and story. You could also ask them in advance. So you might know it going in, and you might say to the person you're talking to, hey, I want to understand this, I thought we are, just use this example that Lillana brought up, I thought we were looking from within to fill positions rather than going outside our system. I noticed this is an outside hire, okay? So you could ask it behind the scenes and know the answer and say, hey, because the community heard it, I'm going to ask it on Monday night too, but I don't want you to feel like I'm putting you on blast or not supporting you, I'm going to do it in advance. So you prehave the conversation and then you also ask it again publicly so the story can be said, and then you're building that trust, right? Um, both with the community and you have the information before. You could frame the question during the board meeting, like, I had the opportunity to ask this the other day, but I think it's important for our public to know too, that even though we're looking from within first, we also need to hire from without from time to time, given the scope or the problem we're trying to solve, or the talent we're looking for, or whatever the case may be. Can you explain what was shared earlier so that everybody's on the same page? That might be a nice way to bring it into the public purview without it feeling, so it's just that sensitivity around it, especially now, maybe not always, would you need to be that thoughtful about it? But that might be a strategy. I'm not saying you have to take my advice, but it's just an idea.
I appreciate it, and I think that, again, when we talk about that balance of trust, so again, what do we give? What do we receive? What do we give? It's, it's a balance.
It is a balance.
Everybody has to be on board.
A part of that, yes.
And a part of that, because that has happened before, but then another board member will say, well, this was already discussed. So it's kind of like, well, why are you asking this? Like you're doing this purposefully.
I get it.
Do you know what I mean? So there are pieces that we need to clean up.
The administration.
Yes, yes, or administration says that, right? Because then, so we just have pieces, but I'm glad we're having this conversation and lifting it off.
I agree.
So that we understand.
And I will remind you all, and you know this, so please don't think that when I say it, I think you don't know, and you're hearing it for the first time, but the point of all of this is to revisit it, to re-bring it up, because you're in the midst of solving a really challenging situation, right? And so the more we can kind of rethink through it and do it collectively, so we have the shared experience, so that from today, January twenty-seventh going forward, through the remainder of the school district, and then again into the fall, we can refer back, you can all refer back to this. I will say that, um, it's really important to realize the space you're in. And it's almost always the way people say things versus what is being said, the way we frame them, the context, the tone, the voice, all of the things that we do, often if we say them differently, they're received differently. So like, I'll just use a personal example, sometimes I think I say things really nicely to my husband, and he says I don't. And he's probably right, and I'm probably wrong, but in the moment, I think I'm right. And it could be like even a word like what? You could say what? What?
Right.
Or you could say what? Or whatever scowl, or whatever, you get my point? So the word or the question or the comment is the same, but the tone, the body language, and the other piece, the framing and the context can change everything. So as we talk about norms and protocols and things at the very end of our time together, that will be an area where you might want to revisit, and maybe you're going to change your norms and protocols and how you look at them at the beginning of each meeting, because you know you're in a really hard time and people are on edge. So it's usually that piece.
Well, just about saying what I was saying on the subject, but the problem being, if we don't address it, and you know, what you said, I liked it that, you know, call them and say, you know, but at the same time, when we don't know that the staff is coming from outside too.
Yes.
They have to also let us know, you know, not that you know, that you have to clarify to us, but because you had this conversation, and it has to be said publicly, because what you said was, we're going to look, use the talent inside first.
Yeah.
Without looking outside, that was said publicly. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So now we got a new hire, and they'd be like, well, what school you come from? They'd be like, oh, I'm new, so now you know, Lauren got the staff upset and everything, you know, where they said they're going to do this and they're not, so you got the staff not trusting us.
Right, and so that's great feedback, because no matter what position we hold or however long we've had it, we can always get better and do better, right? So feedback helps us to do those things. So whomever you're referring to, some of the feedback that's coming forward here, if they could, if it could trickle to that person and say, hey, when you have to make a hire that's outside, even though that's not really our focus, it might be a one-off, it might be an exception, that you need to frame that publicly and to your Board of Education and give them the background so they understand it, then can hopefully draw into be supportive. So I think, I think you're bringing up a good point, I think we've talked about strategies and ways, you never have to accept anything that I suggest, but it's a suggestion, and I'm glad you're bringing it forward, because when we leave things like this unsaid, they can fester.
Yes.
And, and bubble up, and they come out in all the wrong ways, which is why you get a what or a whoop. I mean, it just depends, right? So if you get it out there in advance, you can remember and, um, figure it out, and ultimately it's received more respectfully, or the right answer is probably different.
I'm glad you could admit that you're wrong.
Oh, yeah. Listen, twenty-seven years and six years before that, I've been wrong plenty of times. So is he though. We all contribute, we all contribute. I'm no angel, I agree. Okay, so budget, big one. Here's a big one. We're going to keep applying the same strategy, why? Because I don't want to beat a dead horse, but because it's an effective strategy for examining this, we're going to focus on the verbs. Budget is a big area, just like educational program, um, and then just like the staffing, the employment piece. So the superintendent recommends and administrates policies related to the development of the budget and the management of the budget. He or she creates and implements the process, and a calendar for budget prep and monitoring. They develop and propose the budget to the board, they make revisions to the board as requested, and then they administer the budget once it's adopted. And then on the other side, for the board, the Board of Education adopts policies related to the budget creation and management. They review the proposed budget submitted by the superintendent, they ensure alignment to the district goals, and they verify the reliability of the assumptions upon which the proposed budget is based. Here's a quick reminder, the assumption, one of the key things in a school district's budget is the per pupil count. I asked earlier, how many students do you serve? And John right away knew it, to be four. Like he didn't say like a round number, he said nine thousand four hundred and four, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay? He didn't say nine thousand four hundred, he didn't say nine thousand five hundred, he didn't say nine thousand four fifty or four twenty, he didn't round up sixteen students, he didn't round down four. Why?
It was the exact number.
It's the exact number, and you get an amount of money per pupil.
That's right.
Not a round up and not a round down. You get certain funding through title and state and local, you know, all of the things come together to create the board, uh, the budget rather. So you have to be able as board members to verify the reliability of the assumptions. We assume we're going to lose twenty students from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. I don't know what, I'm just making up an example. Uh, our projections say that our incoming kindergarten class is going to be larger than the exiting senior class. There's a new housing development going in, and we, we believe that we're going to get additional students. School of choice numbers tell us X. So you should be questioning and verifying the reliability of the assumptions that create the budget. Budgets are not perfect. Some of it is known, some of it is not known. We rely on the state whose annual fiscal, or the fiscal year is different than the school district's fiscal year. So sometimes school districts are waiting till the eleventh hour to get information from the, the state government about how things are going to be funded. Yes?
Could you speak to a phrase in here that says, makes revisions to the budget as requested by the board? Could you spend a minute on that?
Yes. So we will do that. So I'm not, I'm not overlooking your question, I'm just going to do one thing first and then I'll answer back. So let's take a look at the verbs, and let's decide who's the lead and who's the support on this. Who wants to do it?
I'll do it.
Okay.
We have recommends and administers, develops and proposes, makes revisions, administers, the superintendent.
So recommends, administers, makes, what did you say? Recomends, administers.
Yep, I missed creates and implements.
Creates and implements, makes revisions.
Develops and proposes.
Develops and proposes. Okay? Develop and proposes, and then on the other side, what do you say?
Adops, reviews, ensures, verifies.
Stronger verbs on the board's side or stronger verbs on the superintendent's side? Superintendent or board?
Superintendent.
Okay, yes. But I would argue that this is a pretty strong verb, ensure. Maybe the strongest verb on this screen is ensure. So you're adopting it, which means you're accepting it. In other words, you're approving it. What's that?
We adopt policies.
Yes.
Related to budget creation and management. We don't adopt necessarily, so I'm just reading what this is.
So you're adopting policies that guide the budget development, but ultimately you will...
And ensures the alignment to district goals.
Right, so remember we talked about goal setting?
Mm-hmm.
They're empty if they're not funded. They're empty if they're not supported, right? You can't create chocolate chip cookies if the opportunity for the ingredients are missing the chocolate chips, the sugar, and the flour, right? You can't achieve a goal if the budget doesn't provide proper funding to achieve the goal, to have the things you need to do the work. So it's equal, all right, but arguably, the board has a pretty big job to ensure that it's right, and to question and verify the reliability of the assumptions. Now, trust is going to create the balance, because you cannot be finance, financial experts necessarily, that's why you have people hired that up. So they're creating and developing the budget, but you have the, you have the ability to question it. And if, and so you asked me to speak to this, make revisions to the budget as requested by the board. So you're the, you're the goal setters. If there's budget items that don't match the goals, then either they need to revise the goals, or we need to revise the budget. So that statement really speaks to, the way I read it is that as the board, ensuring that it's aligned to district goals and verifying the reliability is that it might not be a match. And so you might ask the superintendent to go back to the finance department and make some changes. Hey, we said that we're adopting this new curriculum next year, we're buying all the supplies, but I don't see it in the budget. Yes?
Um, can you talk to about, uh, and I think you're, you're kind of hitting it right. Um can you talk to about uh, and I think you're, you're kinda hitting it right now a little bit, how alignment of resources to the strategic plan and in the board's role in sending the goals, like you said. We also have a finance committee that's a subset of the board too that can provide like checkpoints during.
The year?
Of course, yeah, correct.
Yes.
To make those revisions.
So best practice when it comes to stra- to strategic plans is that there are quarterly to-do lists and you will, that if they're achieved and completed throughout the four quarters of that school year, that year, you will achieve that goal that is in alignment with the strategic plan. It's about everything being aligned. Yes?
And we just created alignment uh before we, our school improvement plans were scattered all over the place.
Yes.
They all not fueled the district and strategic plan for the alignment of resources, whether it's curriculum instruction, anything before we had like twenty different plans.
Yes.
We finally started aligning those, but again, the goals can be established with the, the Board of Education with some of the goals that they want to see with the district.
Yes. Both. I think it's best to create, to create the goals collaboratively, but at the end it's the board's responsibility to say, yes, these are a match and these are the ones that we're going with. So yes, I think it's both. Um okay, so in the perfect world, all school districts have three to five-year plans that are current, that is their strategic plan. In the perfect world, those strategic plans have big overarching goals that within that five years they'll achieve. They're big goals. So then they are broken down into the component steps that would be yearly goals to achieve the five-year plan. Within that yearly goal, it's broken down into quarters of what we need to accomplish in this quarter and who needs to be in the room to do the work in order to get the yearly goal. And if the yearly goal is achieved, it's a step towards the five-year goal. And it requires consistency over time. So in systems that have turnover of leadership and turnover of boards, it's really hard to keep that consistent. Add in COVID, add in all the funding that came with COVID and all the rules and the pieces around it, it makes things really complicated for schools right now. The other piece that makes it really complicated is a lot of systems are dealing with declining enrollment. A lot of the landlocked older communities are dealing with declining enrollment. So now you're having to look at right sizing in the facilities component, which we haven't even really gotten into. So you're being asked to do something really, really complex and it sounds simple when you lay it out, but day to day you can get stuck in the weeds with all of this. Yes?
I just have a question about that last part on board role that verifies reliability of assumptions. Um I think some of the assumptions are where a lot of the projecting comes in on the budget.
Yeah.
Um like you said, to be on a school board, you don't have to be the financial expert or the education law expert or any of that. So if we're presented with these are the assumptions we used, if they're the experts, how are we the ones that are able to verify the reliability?
You're just gonna ask questions, right? And there, and it's, that's a really great question. But there is a finance committee that you and your operating chief did an organizational meeting the other day, you said. So whoever sits on that will work more closely with finance and so they might be your go-to people. They might bring in attorneys or other consultants. They might bring in your director of finance and other people that are looking at the books. And collaboratively they'll go through and look at it to make sure that the assumptions are reliable. There are a lot of types of projections on enrollment. Things don't always come in real time. That's why there's amendments. That's why there's audits and all of those things that are along the way. But I want to make sure I did justice to your question is revisions to the budget as requested by the board is really um sort of a big picture piece and it can be a close-up picture piece too. But it's making sure that the board, the, the budget that the board approves matches the goals, the values, the vision of the district. So you have your verify your strategic plan goals, you have your annual goals and then every year you're looking at the steps that you need to take in order to achieve that goal. And that's where you're asking, that's the accountability piece. The other piece that makes us really nicely aligned in the perfect world is when the annual goals are a match to the superintendent's evaluation. And when the superintendent is asked to report to the board his or her progress towards those goals, he might present himself. In this case, John might present himself, but he might also bring in his principals to present. He might bring in the curriculum coordinator to present. Teachers and students might share pieces of information that illustrate the progress towards that goal completion. And we know that unfunded goals and unfunded mandates rarely ever get achieved and so this piece here speaks to you making sure that there's alignment and assist it to the best that you can. This is not a pure and perfect process. If it was, we wouldn't be sitting here, right? So there's that. But this is the idea of it and this is again a balance. It's a balance and trust is the key. Ken?
So I'm just thinking about, you talked about asking questions, but then you also made the statement about getting in the weeds. And so to me, when you talk about budget and the importance of budget and the board being responsible.
Yeah.
Then the board is going to get in the weeds in terms of the questions that they ask.
They might.
And that has to be understood and respected.
Yeah.
Um and so that's, that's the piece that I just, I wanted to bring forward and even in, on the finance committee when questions are asked, people need to be prepared and if they're not prepared, bring it back.
That's right.
When they say they're gonna bring it back, but understanding that the questions are coming for understanding because ultimately what I hear you're saying, we're responsible.
That's right. And it's perfectly fine to ask the questions and you might sometimes get in the weeds. Yes?
Next question is around, Brad's question, just to follow up on verifies reliability of assumptions. And so what you talked about is what I heard you say is that, is that can come from the finance committee, that can come from another board member or should it all work through the finance committee? I guess that's my question.
Well, it depends on the scope of your finance committee because everybody, every school district does it a little bit different, but.
Maybe that's something we need to talk about.
Yeah.
Because I also heard you talk about bringing in the attorneys or whomever to help you understand, to verify the reliability. So that would mean that perhaps the treasurer would need access to the attorneys or whomever to be able to verify.
Yep, and usually that would go through John.
And the trust again with uh, I think plays the part because if we wanted attorney at our finance committee meeting, again, it would travel through.
That's right.
And transparency, just talking about that a little bit, just even with emails to be communicative. Because I think it is important, you got, you hit on this, Miss May did as well. Uh I, I do think we have to ask questions because I think questions strengthen it. But they have to be front-loaded too, so people know what materials they need to, to bring and then publicly, I agree, the public needs to hear and our stakeholders need to hear what, what some of these questions that emerged were.
Yes, I agree. Trust will always be key in these very difficult conversations. And then if you do want the attorneys to weigh in or you do want the people in the finance department to weigh in, always have an agreed-upon way through which you're gonna communicate. And I would always recommend that it goes through John. And then John can decide, well, I don't need to know this, but, or CC me, but if you can just call your, the director of finance or your assistant super, I don't know what all the roles are here.
But, but there has to be defined roles of what that communication looks like. So if they want, let's say our uh policy committee or, or the finance committee would like attorneys, they would travel through the board president who then in turn would travel through.
A hundred percent, right?
So yeah, so and I did say that, maybe you didn't hear me, but I was clarifying that. I did say that to go through. Yeah, so that piece. And I think the other piece is when you talk about front-loading, you have to have information in advance. You can't get information the day of
Right.
and then people expect you to be able to front-load.
Fair, totally fair.
It's just not, it doesn't happen that way. So there are just pieces, I feel like, again, this is good, we're having conversations. I feel like we can then begin to talk about what expectations are and what's needed.
Yes.
To move forward.
A hundred percent. And this is good. This is, the point of doing this work is to bring these things forward and where are the opportunities for growth and change, where they're needed. And I agree, John, what you're talking about are the protocols for communication. How do we agree that we're gonna uh communicate with one another? And it's one of the topics that we're gonna look at as well. Okay?
Question.
Yes?
Okay, when we serve in all different boards as trustees, this is the first one. And maybe I missed it because when, the day that the budget was approved, I was absent. I had to excuse absent that day. But as a trustee on a board, I have never approved the budget without, we always say budget is approved, uh approved pending audit.
Right.
And I guess here what we do is we just approve the budget?
Well, there's different stages in the year that the, the budget goes through. So you approve it to start the year, but there's always the October audit that comes in and then you have to readjust.
Right, okay.
And then, and so, and then also you know what your, your fall counts are for, for pupils. You know how many students arrived versus how many students you thought were coming.
Right.
And so it, it's necessary because it is a dynamic process that's ever-changing, day to day, week to week and so on, that you do revisit it throughout the year and that you make sure that it's ever in alignment. But the idea is that that in a perfect world, the budget matches the goals and uh the priorities of the system and then you're questioning the assumptions that you have trust in the people that are doing it and you have systems and protocols for how you're gonna communicate within your committees through and to John and to the rest of his team. Yes?
So, and I don't know if we'll get into this or if this is even a question for you.
Sure.
But how do you, so when trust is broken, right? Because you have relied on the assumptions, you have relied on all the things that are considered to be the role of the superintendent as a board. And then once that trust is broken, because that's where I think we are, how do you begin to do that repair without feelings, feelings being hurt, right? Because there are more questions coming. There are more um, there's just, there's, there, there's more getting into the wood weeds at this point, right? And so then how do you do that moving forward to keep the district going and to, to repair some of the harm that's been done? Because everything that you've talked about makes complete sense, but the center of all of that is trust. And so once that trust is broken, you're now at a place of having to repair that trust.
Yeah, and so that is sometimes easier said than done. And again, I can give you some ideas, but again, you'll have, you have to find your own path forward. So one of the key pieces when, when, when people have a sense that trust is broken is to remind ourselves that we have to uh operate from a lens of positive intent. In other words, people, just like we say as educators, parents get up and they give us their very best version of their children every day, right? Now, we might disagree that the children have what they need or it doesn't really matter. That parent got up and brought their child to school and it was the best version of that child they could give you that day in hopes that you'll take it from there. So everybody gets up in the morning and they want to do good. Rarely do I know a person, particularly in this world, serving your community on a board of education, dedicating your life to a career in education where they say, today I'm gonna get up and I want to get it all wrong. I want to break trust. I want to hurt people's feelings and I want to do harm to kids. Nobody does that. Now, sometimes those kinds of things happen, but that wasn't their plan necessarily. Now, I mean, there's one-offs and there's exceptions and people that do unethical things. I'm really not talking about the one-offs and the exceptions here. I'm talking about the general viewpoint of people that are doing this work. And so if you can assume that the people doing this work alongside of you are doing their role and they got up that day with the best of intentions and they wanted to do good and they didn't and that earned trust that you had, then the best way I think forward is to let that person know, to have respectful dialogue, to be direct, to confront the issue. When I say confront, I don't mean ugly. I mean direct. When you did X and I thought it was Y, this is what happened. Uh and often that dialogue can be uncomfortable, but I'll tell you what's way more uncomfortable is letting it sit and letting it fester. The only way forward in anything, because all learning is relationships, is to talk to that person. And the worst pace you can do it is in the public eye. So, you know, yet you're a public board and your board meetings are open and they're in the public and they're videoed and they're all the things. So you have to find a way and that's authentic to you and who you are and to what you value to communicate with the people you feel cause the harm or the trust to be broken and to have some dialogue. You have to trust that they'll receive that with the intent that you have. You have to remember your tone of how, what and what can sound. And you have to find that way forward. And then once you find a way forward, you kind of have to agree to let some of that go because if, in any relationship, if you say, okay, yeah, we're good until the next time and you bring up all the bad from the last time, it just piles on and creates more dysfunction. So it's the same as any relationship. And so this can be tricky. Uh it can be tricky, but the purpose here for the purpose of the bus is to remind who does what. What are our roles, what are our responsibilities and to do that to the best of our ability, recognizing that it is dynamic and it is also imperfect. Okay?
I think right now is it's so much that's personal. You can't have a conversation, even when people ask you, have a conversation with me. Tell me what you think. You can't even have a conversation with somebody without them taking it personal. And it's not personal. You ask me what I thought and I'm just telling you what I, I'm thinking. I'm not, I'm not the board. Just because I think like this don't mean that everybody on the board thinks like this.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's not easy. I mean, relationships in general aren't easy.
Absolutely, they not.
They're not. And so it has to make it real to who you are and uh, and sometimes you'll do it imperfectly. I will tell you though that the worst thing you can do is to not address the elephant in the room. That's the worst thing you can do. So even if you do it imperfectly with positive intent, it's better than not doing it at all. And you also have to have an open heart of forgiveness as well and grace because if you don't have those components with you, then you'll stay stuck or you'll be ready to like bring all the old stuff back.
Right.
And, and it's not easy. You know, it's not easy. For the sake of time, I'm gonna press forward um to take a look at community relations because this is an important piece too for board governance. And both the superintendent and the board has roles in the area of community relation, sticking with our strategies. On the superintendent's side, the superintendent recommends and implements a program of community, of school community relations and keeps stakeholder groups informed about the district's policy, programs, procedures. The board adopts policies governing school community relations, advocates for the public school system and remains responsive to community ideas and needs. This is a little less controversial. Um in terms of roles and responsibilities, making this happen not always easy. Okay? So uh superintendent, I'll do the verbs this time, take you off the hook. We've got recommended and implements. Okay? And then adopt. Adopt. Who's the lead? Who's the support? Or is it a balance?
It's a balance on this one. It's about the advocates.
It's a balance, right? You're both responsible for the community relation and obviously the goal here is to keep them positive. This is where your why comes in from the very beginning of our time together this morning. Why are we doing this? Just like you have a why, why do you want to be a board member? John has a reason. He has his why. His team has his why. So we have to assume that we all have continuity and similarities that are why and that they're good. And that they're good using positive intent. Recommended implements a program of community relations. Keeps all stakeholder groups informed. This is everything from newsletters, websites, uh Board of Education meetings, visiting the community, being present at football games, being present at community centers and so on. And then the Board of Education adopts the policies around how we do this work. And then you're an advocate for public schools in general and then your own community here. All right. So I would like to refer back, I'll, I'll jump back here. I'd like to refer back to all of the things that we examined um in terms of categories of responsibilities for superintendents and boards. Everything from va- values and vision, goal-setting policy, the educational program, the employment of your only employee, that is the superintendent versus the entire rest of the school district's employees, the budget that the, committed facilities?
No, we didn't go with that, no.
Did it skip?
It skipped.
All right, we'll go back to it. Uh and then I, that's why I like to review it because I didn't realize I skipped it. I should have said, hey lady, you're skipping it.
I thought it was the reason why.
I'm gonna grab a, yeah, this is the, don't mess with my paper.
I know, it's coming back. I was coming back over here. I was just over there trying to get room.
Oh, yes, yes, right. I didn't pre- I'm straight, we lost.
I'm going to give this to you in one second. I'm going to actually use, I gave them my pile, and, uh, please.
Okay.
All right, let me go back really quick. I apologize, I didn't realize I skipped over it. That's why I like to review.
Uh, we thought you skipped over because you said ask in time.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so he thought, he thought this was.
I apologize, I was just fast fingers.
Ask.
Or not fast fingers.
Because you said it right there, when you said ask.
Oh, you're, I, sorry, thank you. All right, back then. I apologize for that. I didn't see it go.
Thank you.
Um, okay. So, facilities, one of the other big categories that can sometimes be easy and sometimes be hard, depending on the age of the district. Facilities is another, another important role. Uh, the superintendent, in the, in the category of facilities for roles and responsibilities, he or she analyzes, interprets, and communicates the needs of the school system to the board. He or she develops and maintains a district facilities plan, recommends and supervises facility renovations and any new construction projects, and champions funding initiatives as directed by the board, things like that, sinking funds, and so on. The Board of Education ensures that there's alignment of the district facilities to the vision and the goals. They approve and monitor school facility improvements, related funded initiatives, and they communicate proposed construction plans to the community. So, on the superintendent's side, you have analyze, interpret, and communicate, and then the board's side, we have ensures alignment. Who's, who's the lead here? Who's the supporting? Or is it a balance?
Superintendent.
Who's the lead?
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah.
Board's supporting.
Yes.
It's a balance, so like everything.
Yeah.
Okay? So, um, if you have a declining enrollment situation in a system, I'm not saying you do, but if you did, you might have to examine, do we need all of these schools? Are they operating as efficiently? Maybe a school's really, really old, and it's not efficient, it's expensive to run, and things break frequently, so they're always, you know, digging into the general fund to fix the boiler, or fix the windows, or the air-conditioning unit's not working, or you don't have air conditioning, or whatever the case is, these are the things that you rely on your superintendent to bring forward to you through the team. Um, okay, so superintendent takes the lead, board's supporting. This is something that would have to factor in with budgets, right? If you need to, uh, I worked in a school district where they were demolishing the two elementary schools and building one super elementary school, and they were doing wings. So, K2 was going to be its own wing, and 3-5 was going to be its own, and they needed lots and lots of community input into how that was going to work. Um, so that was a nice balance, but architects and, uh, maintenance and custodial and all those people were weighing in on this side, and then the board was supporting, and there were stakeholder involvement. Those are things that are balancing. Um, but facilities is important, and I apologize, I overlooked it initially. So, that is community relations we already looked at. So, if you go back and review all of the areas in the presentation, there's a, a nice crosswalk over to the one-pager. It's not perfectly aligned, the terms are ordered, but it's very close. This is a nice thing to see. On the front side, the bullet points are helpful reminder, too, of who does what, the board versus the superintendent. This handout here, Eight Traits of an Effective School Board, is another piece, uh, that is helpful to you. I'm not going to read it to you, but I think, I would, I would encourage you to read it for yourselves of what effective school boards do, and what the goal is in each of the area. Again, it's a one-pager, and it's kind of related to something else we're going to talk about, which is the Board of Education self-evaluation process I'm going to talk about in a minute. But essentially, the idea of this effective governance workshop this morning is to break down the component parts of the areas that you're responsible for as a board member, and to provide a review of how you, um, fit as a board member and a board of education in each of those areas, and then also where the superintendent fits. So, in terms of big picture, I'd like to think of this as, uh, how many people have seen Ferris Bueller's Day Off? Okay, I really, like, that's a classic movie, right? Okay, the scene where Cameron is in the art museum in Chicago, and he's having a really rough time dealing with his relationships with his dad and his parents, and he's staring at that picture of the park. Do you know what I'm talking about? And if you don't, just bear with me, because I'll give you, I'll walk you through it. But he's staring at it, and he sees the big picture, the whole beautiful painting. And then he stares at it, and it zeroes in, and now he starts to see, like, just the lady's hat, or just the lady's dress. And he stares at it more, and you realize that it's like a pixelated, like, uh, was it stippling is what I think the art term is called, where it's a bunch of dots, and the dots create something bigger, and then bigger, and then bigger. And as you zoom back, you see the full picture, and as you zoom in, you realize that this beautiful thing is a series of millions of dots. Okay? So, it's the big picture and the narrow picture. I love that image when I think of this slide, because the board, you have the big picture. You see the whole thing. You have the balcony view, if you will. You have the thirty thousand foot view. You're charged with overseeing the district organization and how all of the parts relate to the whole. You're focused on representing the community's needs and its interests, and you're charged with looking at that three-to-five-year scope. We talked about the strategic plan. You provide overall structure through setting of district goals, and you set clear targets for improvement. And then, you hire your superintendent, and he or she hires his team of leadership, and they make up the administration. They're charged with looking at just that little bit closer-up view, like Cameron looking at that picture on the wall in the museum. Um, they're charged with overseeing their schools and the departments, and they coordinate those components of the greater organization. They focus on working with their constituent groups, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the curriculum coordinators, and all of those bigger-picture pieces, but not as big as your picture. They provide structure to the district and the schools, and they create and deploy plans that ultimately lead to improvement of the system. And then, you have your teachers. They're even closer yet. They're day-to-day in the trenches delivering the educational program to kids. They have a very localized view, the point of impact, if you will. They oversee the classroom, and sometimes the department, their teacher teams, and they coordinate very specific parts of the organization. They're focused essentially on students, and they look at days, weeks, months, unit plans, semester plans, trimester plans, depending. And they really are looking at a one-year component. They provide classroom structure, and they refine and adjust plans in the moment, day-to-day, in a class period, all the time. So, this is a nice slide, because it really takes a look at all the parts, really, of the system, and how it all feeds into the overall success of the district. But you, as the Board of Education, you have to be, your charge is seeing it all from a very big-picture perspective. One of the things that helps school boards, and I'm not here to sell you anything, I'm here to tell you that this is an effective tool and strategy, that helps school boards know themselves and find their path forward. Remember, I said I work with hockey teams, and I, I do leadership coaching with these hockey teams. And I start all my sessions with self-discovery of who they are, and what are their, uh, natural tendencies as leaders. And then, we usually graph the team's data, who have primary characteristics and secondary characteristics in different areas. Usually, the risk-takers are the goaltenders, but they're also some of the other players, too. And so, we look at the balance of the team, and how that might look like and feel like on an actual hockey team. And, um, and what we talk about is that it isn't that any one trait is most important, but it's the absence of the trait on the team that's problematic, that we don't all have to have it all within us, but when we bring ourselves to the table collectively, we have it all. And so, that's really one of the pieces, and I want to encourage you to think like that. You don't have to have all of these gifts and talents in yourselves, or backgrounds, or experiences, or knowledge, but when you see yourself as a governing team that is working towards the same goals and not drilling holes, then you can collectively find you have the strength within all of you, and collectively, it's even better. So, this board self-assessment process is one that we often recommend for healthy boards to continue to find their path forward. Essentially, what it is, is each of you as individual board members take an online assessment, and you think of yourself and your board, and you rate yourself in a variety of categories. Everything from leadership, board responsibilities, academic performance, board effectiveness, data-driven decision-making, board and superintendent relations, and finally, community engagement and advocacy. And then, we at M A S B create a report with your data, and then you can either look at it yourself, or someone like myself can come in and facilitate an examination of your own self-assessment data. And the outcomes of those self-assessment processes are super valuable and powerful, because what it does is it gives you a chance to celebrate what you do really, really well, and it also highlights opportunities for growth, which can then help you set your goals annually. It often is the start of a strategic planning process, so boards will often do the self-evaluation as the beginning point of a new strategic plan. Typically, strategic plans take about six months to complete, um, and M A S B provides that as well. Um, so, this is a little example or snapshot of what your data would look like if you did a self-assessment, and what we provide to you, so you can see it. And then, we also provide a facilitator to come in and help you examine the data, and go through data protocols, and come out with takeaways and useful next steps. And as we are talking about, what does it take to be an effective governing board, or team? This is a healthy process that you can utilize in a service that we offer. Again, I'm not selling you anything, but we come, we're coming together for the purposes of wanting to be our very best effective and efficient and ethical and collaborative boarding, board and governance team. This is a way to do that, too. So, we're in the home stretch. We know that norms are super important, and I alluded to this earlier in our time together. Culture is, is the positive or negative atmosphere created by the way people in an organization treat each other. Teams have unwritten or written agreements about how they will behave with each other and others. These behavioral ground rules, often called norms, are, uh, enable teams to go and maintain a positive culture or shift to negative one. The norms are super important. I don't know if you have norms in your board packets, but if you don't, I highly recommend that you create them. Some boards even put their norms on the back of their name tags, or their nameplates. Some have them taped to their tables. Some have them at the front of their board packets. Some have them on a slide, and sometimes they can even sit in the corner, like, these are smart boards, some of the Boxlight technologies, which is a similar tool. I don't know if smart boards will do it. You can have your norms, no matter what slide comes up, they sit in the corner as a reminder. And if something doesn't seem to be in line with your norm, you have an obligation to hold each other accountable in a nice way. So, remember I told you about that board that throws pens and sometimes jugs at each other? They're not following their norms.
I thought that might just be one of their norms.
And so, what I would say as their support consultant is, you have the obligation to interrupt that person and say, "Hey, uh, it looks like you're really emotional about this, but remember, our norm is that we do X, Y, and Z. Can we take a deep breath, maybe take a little break, and come back at it where we can remember our norms? When things are good, everybody's happy. When teams are winning, everybody's happy. When things are hard, we need our norms." So, if you haven't revisited them, or you don't have them at all, I highly recommend that as you're getting through this sticky time right now in your community, that you use them, and you use them well, and you use them all the time. And it seems hokey, but it is not. Yes?
I have a question. So, like, if we don't really have them, or haven't revisited them, would that travel through the, uh, Board Policy Committee, or?
It could.
Okay.
It could. It, it definitely could. Or you could just, it was pretty easy at the beginning of our session together. I had brought some pretty standard ones, and, and you'll see here in this packet, I give you lots of ideas. You could even do an email group informally, if you wanted, and adopt them.
Because that's my question. One of the harder things communicating, if we have more than three, then it's forum, um, to have some of the communication that needs to take place, that can start to build some of these things.
Yeah. You could do, uh, uh, call it a workshop like this, and just have some open dialogue.
Okay.
Um, and, and set those pieces. I think they'll be really useful for you and how you regard each other. There's that old notion that culture will eat structure for breakfast. And so, you can have the best policies and procedures, and you can know your roles, and you can stay in your lanes, and you can be, uh, know your roles and responsibilities, all the stuff we've talked about until this moment. But if your culture is such that you don't regard each other with respect, then quickly, that battle erodes, and people will get mad. And so, I highly encourage you to spend some time on this if you don't have it, and if you have it, I highly encourage you to go back and revisit it, and have another collective agreement to commit to them, or to revise them, so that you can commit to them collectively. Okay? Here are some sample norms. We'll treat each other with respect. We'll be present at all meetings, both physically and mentally. We'll ask questions when in doubt. We'll interpret silence as agreement, silence as agreement. Whatever you want to have, they're yours. No surprises, people talk about that. Okay? And then, the protocols, supportive structures and processes, i.e. protocols are important. Effective teams discuss and agree on the formal structures and processes used by the board and superintendent in their functioning as a team. John keeps bringing, he caught, he brought up a point, not keeps bringing, that's the wrong way to say that. He brought up a point about communication. If you have questions, or you need additional information, how are you going to get that? Once they agreed upon protocol, we're going to go through in order to ask those questions to get that additional information. They go through the, the, the board president, and then the board president communicates with John, or however you agree it to be. That's an example. Uh, protocols are the processes followed by the board and the superintendent as they work together to govern the district. That was an example. So, you have the culture of the board. Okay? And we hope that it's a positive one. And one of the ways we can keep it positive, or regroup when it goes to more of a negative lens, or a, a negative bent, is to use norms and to revisit them, and then you have the structure. You cannot have one and not the other. I mean, you can, but it won't work out well. Uh, so you really should have both. Okay? Here are some considerations in the area of protocols for you to think about. Board orientation and development. Every time you add somebody new, and you take somebody off, you change the dynamics. If a hockey team loses a defenseman because he has a shoulder separation, that team dynamics have just changed. That actually happened Wednesday night. Get hit the boards, separated a shoulder, he's out. Now, we have one less defenseman, which means our defenseman needs to be ready to skate on either side of the ice with anybody else. A forward might get pushed back to D, who knows? But all I know is that team dynamic, and that plan has changed. It is no different than if the Board of Education loses a member or gains a member. If you have two or three new members, that really changes things. Consider how you're going to communicate. That sounds like a big one you should talk about soon. Not only the process for communication, but also the norms that go along with it. How do you request information that ties into communication? How do you handle complaints and concerns from the community and staff, public comments, confidentiality? These are things in a workshop you might want to address. Okay. So, this is, if you have questions, so too, here's my information. Feel free to reach out. But these are the pieces that really come together. So, just to do a moment of recap, we talked about how we were going to regard each other today. We did some basic norms at the beginning. You all follow those beautifully. You have so many strengths here. Even if you disagree or you want to raise up an issue of concern, you've done it today beautifully, respectfully, kindly, directly. It can be done. Uh, we went over all of the different roles and responsibilities that a Board of Education has, and how that plays with the and how that plays with the superintendent and the rest of his team. We've reviewed that a Board of Education is in fact a governing body, a governing team, and what that is. We've talked about the fact that we all need to be rowing in the right direction because we have clearly defined goals that we're working towards and that we don't let people drilling holes in the boat when we're looking or not looking. That means that they're not following the protocols and norms. We looked at what the National Association of School Boards says and effective governance board does. And then we've reviewed the protocols and considerations for norms and culture that help create the environment that we all live in while we do this work. I've shared the eight traits of an effective school board with you as a reference and then the quick one-page summary of all of this that outlines in bullet point form and then a grid of the different roles and responsibilities. What I know is that effective teams govern and they know their responsibilities and they stick to them. And when they have disagreements, they don't let them fester. They assume positive intent. They're direct and what's on their mind and they get through those things and press forward. You all are dealing with some challenging things, but I know you all are here for the right and good reasons. You've shared that, your why. And then I know that you're going to forge a really great path forward and you will get to the other end of this. It is too shall pass, as they say. It might pass like a kidney stone, but it will pass. And you will get to the other end of this. So one of the things I'd like to ask you to do is just a kind of quiet recap. And I'll ask that you share out, so you do not have to share out, you can pass. What is one thing that you learned today or that you hadn't thought about? You knew about it, but you hadn't thought about it in a while that you're like, "Oh yeah, I gotta do that." Right? That I thought about that again. One thing. Hopefully, it was more than one thing, but just one thing. If you could take a moment and reflect, you can jot it down if you'd like or not. And then I'd love for you to share that out sort of as an exit ticket to end our time together. One thing.
Are you looking for that one thing verbally?
Yes, in a minute. Why don't you have a chance to collect your thoughts? But you can pass if you don't want to share. Okay. Would somebody like to start with the one thing?
I'll start and it was what you were talking about. I hadn't heard that quote about culture versus structure. I think that quote actually sums it up very nicely.
Culture eats structure for breakfast?
Yeah. Words of culture versus structure.
Okay, there. Any other thoughts that you'd like to share? Yes?
I'm sure mine. I think the bedrock of this work has to be lack of casual trust, especially when dealing with adversity. I think teamwork builds trust and it also builds speed when you're working, especially with something that deals with adversity.
Love it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else?
As I'm sitting here listening, taking it in, I would say for our board and our superintendent that we need to push the reset button together and get into a situation where trust can be nurtured.
Good. Thank you. So you're feeling that our reset at this point? We had a selective experience?
There are things that you probably know about that we haven't gone into today where to stand off. And we need to reset that. We need both sides to be back there.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. And in order to, if the goal is to push forward, the only way to do that is to push forward and establish a new beginning point, right? I love that. That's a great idea. Anybody else?
I can share. So I have two thoughts. One, in terms of a takeaway or, as you said, something you knew but didn't think about was just connecting purchases back to the strategic goals and the annual goals. So thank you for lifting that. And then I have a quote that I would like to share as we talk about moving forward. And so for me, this quote just resonates that we can't have reconciliation without truth. So when we talk about trust, we talk about moving forward, if we're not truthful in situations, it is hard to say, "Okay, let's move forward." You can't have that reconciliation. So that's a piece that resonates with me.
Okay, so that's really a cultural piece that you can't have reconciliation without truth. Because if you create the reset that Fred is talking about, but the reset is based on things that aren't fully accurate yet, then it can just set the tone for something to go awry sooner rather than later. Okay, thank you for putting that in the room, Tim. Anybody else? You don't have to share, but you can if you'd like.
I'd like to add onto that. And transparency is almost like a mirror. There are two sides of transparency. So I think I agree with what Ms. May said about you got to get to the truth. You got to throw things on the table, sort them out, and then you can move forward. So I think that's very important.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I want to thank you all for your time, your participation, your attention. It is sometimes hard to take a lot of information on a Saturday morning in a big chunk of time and make it engaging. But I hope that it was engaging and that you were a participant and that it was an opportunity to come together like we take kinders or first graders to the apple orchard and have that shared experience. I kind of, this is one of those places, the apple orchard and the leather, it was not true. But the reality is, this was the shared sort of field trip experience that hopefully will provide an opportunity for your thinking of where do we go from here? What are the resets that need to be done? And what are the conditions for a reset to happen? And so I think that it sounds like you have some ideas as to what your next steps will be and how you can navigate that path forward. And when you do that as a team, it will make navigating these difficult situations even easier. It'll never be easy, but it will help you to be effective and efficient in this work. And as you do it together and you get good at it, it will build trust over time. So thank you very much for your time. It was a true pleasure getting to work with all of you. And thank you very, very much for your service to your community. It's a big deal and I don't think Boards of Education gets thanked enough. You're volunteering to do this and it's a really hard job. So thank you very much. And thank you to your leadership team for having me.
Do you look into it?
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
I think it's going to be time for lunch, too.
Yeah.
Nice to know.
So we're going to take a brief recess till 1:00. Do you have a motion?
To 1:00. I like to make a motion for a recess, a lunch recess.
Okay. Do you have a say?
I support.
All right. All in favor?
Oh, boy, I'm so cold in here.
Ms. May?
Present, sorry. I ran myself.
I am president and Mr. Fred.
He's going president, huh?
For president.
Hi.
I wish they had some blood.
Oh, we're still on 242.24. We have Robert Guan with us now to talk about PA 109, 114 for 2015 and that's our FA Division of Treasury.
Well, thank you for having me, first of all. And I assume this is the board right here. That's who I'm talking to today.
This is us.
Got some administrative folks back here and some people that would like to hear a little bit more about this. Well, thanks for having me. Number one, who am I? Well, I'm Bob Guan. I am from Michigan School Business Officials. That's a group in Lansing that has everybody outside the classroom. So if you think about a school district and whether it's finance, HR, facilities, transportation, technology, anybody who's not necessarily in the classroom with kids, that's who I deal with. More specifically, in the finance area, we do have others that handle that support. So we're here today to talk about a few things. I've given you a handout. We're going to talk about that. And then I've got a resource that we have posted online on our website that I think is going to be almost exactly what you're hoping to hear from me. Now, I didn't print that out because you can get it. Anybody can get it. It's on the web. This is just kind of something to get your mouth wet here with this topic. My expectations is you're going to leave here understanding maybe a little bit about the timeline. You know, first, what do we even talk about when we talk about early warning? Secondly, what does Treasury think early warning looks like? And then at the end, we're going to talk about maybe time frame. What I'm not going to talk to you about is your situation, how you got here, how you get out of this or anything to that nature. Because quite frankly, I don't know. I haven't really researched or studied the situation that you're in. All I know is that you want to talk about 5% because that's the big thing. And it will be, you know, we can talk for three hours, we can talk for a half hour. It's totally up to you. This is not that tough of a topic when you have the right resources. As soon as you hit kind of where you are, everybody's got an opinion. And everybody may not have the actual information that you need as a board and really the community to make some decisions to move forward. So that's kind of why I'm here, what I'm doing. I've been in K-12s, I've been at ISDs and I've been around this for about 26 years. So don't think you're the only people that have ever been here. That would be a false statement. Maybe it's the first time that you've touched this area and it is what it is, but it's not insurmountable. It's not difficult to get out of this. Some difficult decisions, but in the end, I think you're going to be just fine. So that's who I am and why I'm here. Whoops, and I hit the wrong button already. Uh-oh.
Third half. He's waiting on you had the website open.
Holy moly, everything's going on. Let's do this. Let's do...
Go to slideshow?
Yeah, where is that?
So over to your right.
There it is. These are really neat machines when they work, huh? All right, there we go. There we go. Okay, so there's a public act or a series of public acts that were put out in 2015. There's also a new division at Treasury as a result of that. And that is who you're probably going to hear from if you haven't already. And it's a group that I've worked with before that are going to start the processes saying, "Hey, what's going on? How can we help? Where are you today?" So we'll talk a little bit about them as well. The PAs are relatively simple. I threw this because it came right off of the Michigan Legislature website. Now, there's just some key things here. You can see that they started, this is all back in 2015. So when you really start thinking, well, that was quite a while ago. There was a time, maybe back in 2009, 10, 11, that we all received a $470 per pupil cut. So when the Snyder administration first began, the first thing that happened was we got cut and stayed eight. The second thing is we started funding community colleges and universities out of the school aid fund. Two things that took revenues out of the pockets, if you will, of K-12 students and districts. So meanwhile, as that took place, we had something called best practices. If you did this, we'll give you some money for this. And we all went bid on that because it was $100 a kid. So we did some things that probably we weren't considering doing, but we received those funds. Well, after a few years, districts were running into some issues because of that major $470 cut. So as a result of that in 15, it was developed at the legislative level, the early warning system. So the early warning system is what we're looking at in these PAs. So PA 109, 110, 111 threw, actually 113, but I threw in 114 as well. This is the one I think that everybody focuses on and I'm going to show you that maybe don't worry as much about that, is this first one in PA 109, reporting of budgetary assumptions. So that's this 5% deal that you have heard about. 5% fund balance. If you're under 5% fund balance, uh-oh, what happens? Treasury is in and we lose control and what do we do? No, not so fast. There are a lot of districts in the state that actually survive under 5% fund balance. I worked out in Michigan's thumb. A lot of those districts have low fund balance, but it's consistent. It's a trend. They have 3%, but it's 3% every year. It's all about the trend. Don't worry as much about the number. Worry about the trend. And that's what you hear from Treasury as well. So these PAs, there were several of those. We're probably not going to talk in-depth about all of them because you're not there. You're at the very beginning of this process. You're at the beginning where you see an issue that has to be resolved. If it's not resolved, it just gets worse. So you're doing the right thing. Number one, you had M A S B in. You know, I can't speak to how great their session was, but I'm sure it was telling you as board members, here's your role in this whole thing. And it's probably not to get in the weeds and worry about individual issues per se. And I'm hoping that's what they said. This is kind of a different angle on things where you're going to see these PAs. Probably the biggest one for today is that first one that talked about the assumptions and what does that mean? And what is your role, not only as a board, but administration? So again, I'm not going to talk about these. You can look these up if you'd like. MichiganLegislature.org and you can look these up and read the whole thing. They're not that exciting, but they do lay out a little bit of a path for you. There was an article written soon after the early warning legislation came out. Miller Canfield is a law firm, does a lot of work with schools. They do a very good job of explaining this. Amanda Van Duzen is a friend of mine. She wrote this. And I cut out, again, I gave you where you can go and read this. Send it to all your friends. Because this explains what the process is. It's in a written narrative. I'm going to show you later in an actual timeframe that's got a timeline. But Amanda did a really good job on this one. So back in July 7th of 15, there was this package of bills. There's a couple of big words that I think you're going to have to understand by the time today's done. There is a word called potential and there's a word called probable. And they don't mean the same thing. So you'll see a lot of potential for fiscal stress. At the end of the day, as this process goes through, there will be something called probable fiscal stress. So they're two different words. They mean entirely different things. You're not even the first one yet. Because now you're having these meetings. You're probably going to hear from Treasury soon if you haven't already. And I'll show you on a timeline why I would say And I'll show you on a timeline why I would say my guess is you'll hear from soon, due to the fact that our financial information from last year, last June, has now all been uploaded, and now it's accessible. So, I can go in and pull all this data and see what all the districts are doing. It's exactly what Treasury does. That was all part of the early warning transparency issues. If we could get our hands on individual district information, maybe we can help out before things go awry. And that's a good thing. So, the potential for financial distress is a term. Probable fiscal stress is a different term. Everybody likes to go to that probable, because probable means you're gonna deal with the state treasury in a whole different way. It's gonna be the state treasurer, it's gonna be the governor, it's gonna be, you know, emergency managers. That is way over here. Don't worry about that. Worry about this other side of the moon. Here is the infamous 5%. So, PA 109 also says, "If you don't have a positive 5% fund balance, then we wanna have a chat with you." It doesn't mean, uh-oh, it's the end of the line. It doesn't mean sell your buildings. It doesn't mean stop buying buses. It doesn't mean that. What it means is, we're getting close, just like your bank account, it's getting close to the end. What are we gonna do? Is this a trend? Is it something that happened that's not gonna happen again? Therefore, not having to go any deeper? It's those types of questions that I think right now is what you ask, what your administration asks, and certainly what Treasury asks. So, the 5% alone doesn't mean anything. This is a combination of factors that all come together. And that's basically what the Treasury will look at on every district, not just you, every district. So, as I said, there is a potential for stress. There's probable stress, which probable means is pretty good chance. There's also something called active involvement and inactive involvement. And we're gonna talk about those in the second part of this presentation. So, the terms, you have to be very careful with, because everybody likes to jump on the negative term. From a media perspective, sometimes that's where they go. And that's what affects your community, because they see the very negative term. Hopefully, that doesn't get to that point. But I'm trying to get you to understand that there are some differences. Again, they're assumptions. Once you hit that mark of 5%, if Treasury feels that they need some information, you are gonna start giving them your budgetary assumptions. Now, what's that mean? I don't know, it's pretty easy. What did I use for foundation allowance? How many kids do I have? How many did I project for next year? What are my costs per kid this year and in my budget? That's about it. I mean, it's not a difficult thing. We have those items in May generally, when we take the budget through the board. Those are things that we might not know 100%, but they use the best information I can get out of MSBO and the Legislature, and everybody we work with in Lansing, to provide our members with the best information we have to do their budget. So, having said that, you go into this budget, not really knowing some things, but you're taking good guesses. That's what the budgetary assumptions are. That's what we're trying to do, is actually show the state, show Treasury, this is what we're using for next year. They'll look at it and say, "Yep, that's probably what I'd use too." Or they'd say, "Hey, wait a minute. You guys have lost 150 kids every count, and now all of a sudden, you're not losing any." That doesn't make sense. Tell us why you think that. So, the beginning of the process, before any of this stress talk, is simply a conversation. And it's a conversation with the folks at Treasury who are responsible for this. And that's why I say, you're probably gonna hear from Treasury, and the guy's name's Sam Ear. I know him, he's a friend of mine. He's probably gonna send you a letter and say, "Hey, we noticed this trend. What's going on? Is there something we can help with? What happened?" That's about where you are right now. That's at the very beginning. Go ahead.
So, I'm reading this, is this for the two most recent school years? So, we have not, if this hasn't been for two school years, will we still hear from them simply because there's this large dip?
In this case, yes. Answer your question easily, yes. You'll hear from, not necessarily just because of that dip, but what they'll look at is a bunch of different factors. Fund balance being one of them. Whether or not they know what you budgeted for this current year. Remember, we're all talking about June 30 of '23. We're already in '24. So, the only thing that Treasury knows right now is what's posted on their website. They may wanna know, "Okay, what'd you do this year? What'd you budget for in kids? Last three years, you've gone down 50 or 60 each count. What'd you do this year?" So, it's not just that 5% over two years. And actually, these days, Treasury will say, "If you're under 5% in either of the last two years, we still wanna talk to you." So, they may take, as I said earlier, there are districts that are always under 5% and are not, they don't even talk to Treasury, because their trend is, oh, that's how you do it. Some districts will build up fund balance and purchase buses. They just burn all their fund balance, they buy 10 new buses. So, they were at 20%, now they're at 3. That's what they do every five years. So, Treasury understands that. So, again, the conversation with them is not, I don't want you to think, "Oh my God, they're here." That is not the case. They're here to help and just figure out what's going on, and maybe give you some assistance in how to turn things around if need be. So, again, the 5% is a marker, but it's not all the markers. So, if Treasury comes in and says, "Boy, based on everything we see, there's a potential we might have an issue here." And again, that word is potential. It's not probable. They just don't know. So, that's what we're gonna figure out. And there's a process that goes into play. You can work with your ISD, and if you go that route, it's a more localized way of figuring out what can we do to reverse our trend. Any work in this case with Wayne Reeser. And you talk to them, they help you through your budgets. They probably look at the bigger picture. They give you some ideas on maybe what you should think about doing. You know, lots of times, probably know what we think we should do, but you really don't know the bigger picture, because you're focused right here on Wayne Westline. I mean, that's what you're responsible for. You're not responsible for everybody else. Wayne Reeser's responsible for everybody. So, they'll be able to help if you get to that point, and you sign an agreement with them saying, "Hey, we'd like your help, not the state's." That would be the first step that you're gonna run into if Treasury declares there's a potential for fiscal stress. So, really, working with your ISD is probably step two or three. It's not step one. So, you'll walk through that. I'm gonna show you a timeline at the end of this, that I think is gonna brighten this up for you a little bit. Make you see, "Oh, here's where we are, and here's where we think we're going." Once you have that, Bradley asked me earlier, "You know, we're trying to figure out how much time we have. You know, is it fire sale time?" No, absolutely not. Not even close. You have time right now to do what you're doing. Get your ducks in a row, figure out what you really think you need to do. When Treasury talks with you, it's gonna start some of that process. If you do start working at some point with Wayne Reeser, then you have a more extended period of time. Treasury, you won't report anything to Treasury for a couple of years, because you'll work with the ISD themselves, and you'll see some timeframes here. The ISD must complete a review within 90 days of you getting an agreement, if you're deemed to have a potential for fiscal stress. So, now you're talking a little bit more extended time, you know, we're gonna look at this thing. For you, at the district level, it really depends on what you're able to do to get yourself out of this. So, we've got a new fiscal year coming up in July. You know, we're already in February, for the most part. We're already talking next year's budget. If you call me and say, "What's going on this year?", I'd say, "I don't know, it's over practically, we're into next year." So, it really is gonna depend on where you're ending up today with this year's budget. And there might be a need to do something now to avert or help the situation. So, I'm not saying you don't have to do anything for a year. You're probably gonna have to do something sooner and later, I would assume, for this year. But at the same time, you get into this process, there are some reporting requirements, but if you're working with your ISD, it's generally through Wayne Reeser in this area. Now, if you don't like Wayne Reeser, you can go to another ISD, but you're still gonna contract with someone. You can go at your own, but if you go at your own, then you're gonna be responsible for reporting directly to Treasury. I'm not sure how to do that. It might be more laborious, they don't know this area. It might be more difficult. So, we'll see when you have to cross that bridge, if you have to cross that bridge. Again, here, there's just some more information, and I don't think we're gonna get too much in the weeds on this. I think I want you to read through this later and say, "Okay, I'm starting to see a timeline. I'm starting to see 60 days, 90 days." Again, this is not something that just turns around overnight. You're not gonna have a bake sale and solve problems here. And I don't want you to think that it can happen that quickly. There are things that can happen quickly, certainly. But this is a process. This isn't just an answer or an end. Let's see what else is interesting here. Again, I think the Treasury, from their perspective and my dealings with them, they are looking at the bigger picture of your financial situation. Whether you're borrowing funds, whether you do have some student drops that are happening, and you're not expecting them. In the old days, I would say it was more susceptible that a district that may see something coming may not have budgeted for that lowering of student count. And then all of a sudden, the student count would happen, and they lost 150 kids. "Oh my gosh, what happened?" Well, that's why this kinda came into play as well. Treasury said, "We're not gonna play that game. We wanna have budget assumptions that are at least studied, instead of just smoothing it over, passing a budget, and then, oh my gosh, something like that." So, that's probably a little bit of this. So, even though there's a decline in your general fund balance from one of the last two, again, let's not get ahead of ourselves. Don't get ahead of yourselves. Okay. Again, I don't know that it's worthwhile at this point to get into all this, because now we're getting into terms that deficit elimination plans, enhanced deficit elimination. You're not in deficit. So, that's a good thing. If things run the way that they should this year, based on your budget, it's gonna be close. So, you're probably gonna have to take a look at that sooner and later again. But, there's a difference if you're in deficit and pass a deficit budget, or if you are where you are today. And a deficit budget is a different story. It's a, Treasury may work a little bit closer with you. And you have a little bit more time on that, a five-year period. So, let's, let me see what else we got. The end here is, at the very end of the day, there is a way to get in, what you're seeing, and there is a way to get out of this, whether it's easy and quick, and you do it here, and you do it with Wayne Reeser, or if it's this extended period of time that inevitably ends up to be at a higher level of oversight from the Department, or the Department of Treasury. Which, you know, that happens. There are districts that have turned it around, there's districts down here that have turned it around, there's districts on the west side that have turned it around. It just depends on what you're able to do at the local level. Go ahead.
You saw Bob Rosio a few years ago was one, and they worked closely with Wayne Reeser.
Correct, yep. When I kinda researched this in your area, Steve Zizek, and I don't know if you know that name, Steve's a good friend of mine, and he's retired now, so I don't bother him as much. But I called Steve and said, "Hey, I know Wayne Westline's got an issue, or a couple of issues here. Anybody else down there have had this experience?" And he did say that Rosio did, and they were able to work their way through it with the assistance of Wayne Reeser. So, again, I don't want you to think this is the first district that's dealt with issues. I've been around this business 26 years. Every year, there's somebody that falls into an issue and now has to kinda retrench. So, you're not the first district that this has happened to. Question? No question? No? Okay, sorry about that. The calculation itself, how do they figure it out? Well, the big thing is this. They take your general fund, and they take the unrestricted revenues in that general fund. So, they're gonna wipe out some of the revenues that you have. You know, if they are restricted for a specific purpose, then that's what you have to spend those on. You can't use those for operations. So, what they do is they segregate those out, and they basically take anything that is unrestricted, they take your general fund, fund balance, and they come up with a percentage. That's where this 5% really comes in. That's how they calculate it. It's not a mystery, it's not a big deal. Okay, so, let's talk about this division. What is SRFK? What does that even stand for? Well, here's their website. And I put it on here because I think you should go look at it, because it's got a lot of resources. And it's gonna show you maybe some things beyond what you guys need to worry about as a board. But it's gonna show you some of the depth of reporting and what things they look at. There was a system that I worked on years ago called Munetrix. Munetrix was a system that really takes the district as a whole, and it scores the district on a, what I'll call a fiscal stress indicator system. So, I helped design it, I helped build it. We promoted it for several years. Treasury has done the same thing, but they have a lot more access to information than we do. So, as I said right away, all the information on financial information and student information, and everything else from last year, is now uploaded to the Department. They get those loads, they drop them into their system, and boom, people pop up. Lists the schools. What are the trends for this district? Where are they today? And that's why I keep saying, "I think you're probably gonna hear from them, because your fund balance went from 23.5 to 23, to whatever it is today, 6.5." So, they're probably gonna look at that and say, "Whoa, hey, what's going on? Everything all right? Can we help? Have you thought of this?" And that's where you are. So, they have their own system for this. This is the School Review and Fiscal Accountability Division. So, what does that mean? This is kinda the, this is when you go into the doctor and somebody comes in and they take your blood pressure. This isn't the doctor coming in yet. This is that first person that puts a thing on your finger, gets your pulse, takes your blood pressure. That's what this group does. So, if you can imagine that at an office, I don't get too worked up until after they read the blood pressure, but that person doesn't work me up as much as the doc. And that's how you should look at this group. They actually come in, based on the information they have access to, they run it through their system. The system will spit out, "These are the people we need to call, these are the people that are fine." Basically how it works. As I said earlier, there's some terms. Potential, probable, here's the other two. Active and inactive. And this is the first I've heard of this, was last week, when I asked Treasury, "Hey, I've been asked about the process. What are you guys telling people when you go out?" And they said, "Well, we'll send you what we're telling." So, they sent me this whole PowerPoint. Tells a little bit about what they are here. It's great, I already told you that. But there's an active versus inactive. So, active means they're working with you. Inactive means, it's everybody else. So, inactive, which I never knew until last week. The Department of Treasury doesn't request anything, but they get everything from our uploads information. And when you're at a district, you've got reports all over the place. You're uploading financial stuff, you're uploading student stuff, you're uploading your staff stuff. I mean, there's so much that goes to the state. And that's one of the complaints we always have, is, "Don't you already have this somewhere? We've already uploaded 18 times." They are taking all those uploads from every district, and they are running them through their system every year. So, if the district doesn't even realize that they're in a problem, they will know it. And they'll assist where they can. So, this inactive is where generally, you've always been. And now, you're kinda here and maybe getting to that line. So, there's an active participation. So, what does that mean? They might request some more things. They may well request your budget assumptions because of where the fund balance has gone. They wanna make sure it's not going any further. So, you can see here is what that active looks like. So, right now, if you say, "Well, Bob, where are we?" You're here, you're still here, but you're right about there, because they just uploaded all the latest information. So, you're probably gonna get at least a message from them, saying, "Hey, here's something that we call a corrective action plan." Might see a letter that says something like that. That they would like to know what you are gonna do as a board and community and administration to turn this thing around. So, you'll have an opportunity to talk to them. "This is what we're thinking." Boom, 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 boom. "And it should do this, and we're hoping we don't go further than this. And in a year, we'll be here, or two, we're gonna be there." That's what that discussion is all about. And I would imagine that will happen somewhat soon. Go ahead.
So, should we be working on a plan now and not waiting to get a letter? Or should we wait to get the letter?
I think you need to start having discussions, right here, about, okay, they're not gonna come solve our problems. All they're gonna do is report back up the stream. We talk to them, they're working on their problems. So, you still have to, the plan... So you still have to, the plan, the plan is, is here. Go ahead, John.
Just so everybody's aware, probably since the fall, what did you say, to say the Department of Treasury has been watching from afar? Like, warbees and...
Sure they are. Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, the, the, the one thing that happens, and what's interesting, well, what's, well, from a financial spot, yes. But here's what's fun about Lansing. When you're sitting in Lansing, I get every day all the articles that went out on school districts in any publication in Michigan. So no matter what's going on, we all hear about it, one way or another, before or after things are uploaded. And, and the trouble with that is that many times, the full story, the full background, isn't understood, and it's not reported in the right manner. I mean, I, obviously, I knew I was coming here, right? What do you think I'm gonna do? Doggone right. So, and some of the things that I heard, I'm sitting there saying, "That's not even accurate." But guess who thinks it is? My mom, right? Who watches and reads. So that's the difficult part of this, is that the microscope comes on. And, and whether it's right or wrong, doesn't matter. It's just it's on. And this is the group that really knows what's going on. Believe me, my mom doesn't. She'd love her death. She's 87 years old. She always says, "Well, I don't suppose I have a lot of money. I just saw on the news." Yeah, okay. She still thinks the lottery pays for schools. So, so you gotta take it with a grain of salt. But that's one of the tricks. So, in answer to your question, Kimberly, is this. You, as a community, as a board, as administration, you, you need to be working and thinking about, what are the things we can do? Because you're going to get asked that. Whether it's you personally are gonna ask each other, or Treasury is gonna step in and say, "What do you guys do?" If you say, "Well, jeez, we don't know. We were waiting for you to get here." They're gonna say, "Oh, boy. It's gonna be a quick process." So you don't want that. So, answer is, start working on a plan. And I think that's, you know, that goes without saying. So, once they get into this inactive oversight, so, again, this is inactive. This is where you are. So they'll say, "Early warning trend analysis," is what they run. Is what this is called. They put all your information in, and it spits out, is there a deficit projected? Yes or no? And then it goes to the next slide. If there is a deficit, or it's a deficit school, that means you passed a budget that's in deficit, then this is the side that you're going to actually follow. So you're not here. You're just at the beginnings, potentially, of this. Again, you're right at the beginning. This might not even come into play. Okay? If there is early warning, the trend analysis will spit it out. They're gonna ask you some questions. They'll make their determination after all of this takes place. It isn't just one thing. Active oversight. So now they've identified, "Oop, there is an issue here." Their plan may or may not work, or go into play soon. So now we're gonna need some other stuff. So I said early, corrective action plan. They may ask you, "Okay, what's your plan? We're not giving you a plan. We wanna know what your plan is. We'll talk to you about whether that makes sense or not." Believe me, they know everything about us. Transparency and reporting. Go look at your website. You can get who's paid what, what benefits are where, what your pay scales are, what your insurance is, what your audit is, what your budget is. My mom could go get it, because it's online. They've got it too. So, they're gonna be able to come out here and say, "If you're in early warning, or you're potential here, these are some of the things that they're gonna look at, and ask you about." And as John said, board minutes, all that stuff, because it's all in there. If you did have a deficit, then there are some other ways that they move forward. Deficit elimination plan. That's what debt means. Enhanced deficit elimination plan. That's if you don't think you're gonna get out of this for five years or more. So that's when things start getting real serious. So, again, review of a debt. If it's under five years, this is a short-term deal, you're probably gonna work with the Department of Ed versus Treasury. If it's longer than five, then you're gonna be with Treasury. And again, there's more report. I mean, I, I was gonna share with you what they look like. You don't wanna see them. That table doesn't wanna see them. Because it's all budget, and it's all actual, and it's quarterly, it can get to monthly, and, and the amount of work that goes into this is double of what we do today. And a lot of times, what happens, you go to work with an ISD to get through this, they will bring somebody in to do it. They'll go to an accounting firm, and, and this gets a little costly at times. But that's truly what happens, because you probably, in, in some respects, don't have the capacity to do it on your own. Just what it is. That's, that's the amount of information we're talking about. So how do you get out of this, once you're in it? So again, if you're in early warning, they come out and say, "We think there might be a problem here." And you prove that you've gone through your plan, you did your corrective action, you bit the bullet, you did some things you didn't think you would have to do, but you did, and you've turned this thing around, they go back and say, "Well, now we're seeing that there's no budget deficit projected in the coming years." Good job. Well done. We're gonna throw you back into the inactive. We'll monitor you from afar, like everybody else, but we're not gonna work with you personally. If you do get into that deficit area, where you do pass deficit budget, and then they run it through, and you eliminate your deficit, you're out of the, out of the tank. So now you're back to that inactive monitor, just like everybody else, just like you are today. So, there are ways to get in and out, but those are the decisions you have to make at your district level. So here's that 5% again. Again. Kimberly asked the question earlier, 109. They have clarified it. Fund balance is below 5% in either. Because when I first read 109, I said, "We ain't got two years in. You got two years to worry about that." When I saw this, I went back and thought, "Yeah, I guess you could read that a couple of different ways." And of course, it's legislation, and of course, they made the rules here. So, you know, I'm gonna have to go with what they told me. So again, don't just focus on that. It's more than that. They are looking at more things. So if you've got, you know, five things they're looking at, four of them are positive, one's negative, doesn't mean there's a potential for stress. Means you might have to have a correction plan for that. And you might have to prove that you can get out of it. But it's, it's not a catastrophe at that point. It really, you know, I hate to say it, it's really the decisions that you all make is gonna, it's your destiny. It are difficult decisions. I understand that. I've been there. But it truly does boil down to that level. Treasury won't solve your problems. They'll just let you off the hook, once you've solved your own problems. Okay, questions? Not yet. So I, I'm gonna press buttons, and I bet you this doesn't work out well. Okay, ooh, hang on. I got it. Look at that. And I've never taught a class in my life, except for word purposes. So, here is the best school association in Lansing, right here. So, this is, this is where I live. MSBO. So Michigan School Business Officials told you who we are. Our website is open, if anybody wants to go look at it. There are a couple of things we hide for members only, but we're pretty open with all this. So, if you're at home, you know, tomorrow you're gonna be busy. We got chicken wings, we got dip, we got it all going tomorrow. Tomorrow, don't look. But any other day, go to msbo.org, hit any of these buttons up top, and you're gonna get a wealth information. Some of it, you'll like. Some of it, it doesn't matter. School finance is something I like. So I'm gonna go there. And I'm gonna go to rules and regulations, 'cause I like that. That's what we're all about here. And I'm gonna go to the State of Michigan. So I hit State of Michigan. And there's a lot of cool things here. Some of this stuff's old. This is old, but it's called early warning. So early warning is what this whole presentation's all about. This is what, this is the main status. But this is gonna tell you, not only does it give you some information on what others are doing, this is Oakland County, Oakland schools, they've had schools in this situation. They've used a few of these methods to go about working with those districts. The one that I think is very interesting is the Department of Treasury. And the reason I did not print this out, or do a big deal on it, is because this was at a point in time. This is back in 2016, 17. So this is when they first started this whole process, and everybody was scared to death, and didn't know what to expect. So this is their presentation, and I'm gonna show it to you, and I'm gonna give you a look. Uh-oh. Is that not gonna bring it up? So if I go right here...
Oh, yeah, it's just downloading.
Oh. Download?
Yeah. Go to three dots at the top. Oh, I didn't do it that time.
Got it. Got it. Get it. You know, I really liked this thing until about a minute ago. It was cool. There we go. Our buddies, Treasury. See if this works, or if I gotta... How do I get to the next sheet? Oh. Ah, there we go. Okay, this is accessible to you on the website, on our website. This is probably what you are interested in, but the dates are a little goofy, because it's old. But they mean about the same. They go through the public acts. We already talked about that. They talk about early warning. They talk about preliminary review. They talk about enhanced deficit. Early warning is what we're focused on right now. Preliminary review is that, that is down the road, if nothing happens. Enhanced deficit, down the road, if nothing happens. So really, you're looking right here, early warning, that top list. So here's a little bit of how they explain it. Now, I can't do it exactly how they do it, but I'm gonna give it a go on what I think. Okay? So, Department of Ed is over here. Department of Ed maintains the process. If you have a deficit, you work with Department of Ed. If you think you're out of it within five years, you stick there. If early warning, this is in the Treasury bucket. So they've got the cute buckets here, but that's their bucket. So they are trying to be proactive on identifying schools before it gets too bad. That's what we're talking about today. So they will go in, they'll evaluate the budget assumptions, they'll identify potential fiscal stress, and then they'll identify schools that are unable to meet the current financial obligations. So that's what they are trying to do when they come in and start working with you. If this, if this process doesn't work, it gets kicked over to Treasury, which is a different group, which actually is the State Treasurer, the Governor, and some others, that will sit down, and they'll say, "Okay, we're gonna come and do a preliminary review. We're gonna maybe even require an extended debt, because it's going longer than five years. And then we're gonna have monitoring you monthly." So when you're done, you get your board book, somebody in the business office is sending everything to them monthly. This is the end of the trail, right here. And that doesn't happen that often. So, again, we're right here somewhere at the moment. Here is that timeline that you really wanted to see. So this is, and, please, it, it, some of this, some other slides will say 2016, 17. This is it. June 30, it's over. We're done for the year. If you're already in this process, and they are telling you, you have less than 5%, we want your budget assumptions, that's gotta be done by July 7, right there. So it's all based on your audit. Right now, your audit shows greater than 5%. So you didn't have to do it. It's good. Treasury, Treasury receives this stuff, they'll evaluate everything. We have a student count. We might even have an update to our budget. November, this is when all of our financial information and audit has to be done, November 1st. When that's all done, that goes to the Treasury. Treasury gets that information in December. They throw it in their projection model. January, they start looking at this. So here we are. We're in January. So they're going to look at their model, and they're gonna say, "Okay, here's a group that we have to have a discussion with." That's just, it, it's a phone call. It's a letter. It's a discussion. That happens in January or February. Obviously, if it hasn't happened yet, then it hasn't happened in January. Might be into February. Again, they'll start looking at this heavily in February and March, because that's when they're gonna call and say, "Hey, what are, what are you gonna do about this?" And you say, "Well, here's what we're thinking." So it's timely to be where we are today, but the, the time will be quick, that they're gonna give you some contact right here. And then again, once you're through the, that part, you go right back to step one. And that's the cycle. So they're inactive. They're inactive is for everybody, all the time, they're run, running their assumptions, and then they're looking for corrective action plans. And that's, Kimberly, what you're talking about. What's our plan? Well, that's, that's what they're gonna wonder. And you may have a great plan. You might just have the beginnings of a plan. You might not have the plan. Doesn't matter. You're gonna be starting on a plan at some point. Again, these are just the budget assumptions, but you can see the dates are off here a little bit. More of that. Projection model, just tells you how they do it. Enrollment, revenue expenditure, fund balance. Those are the four keys. But I can tell you, they're also looking at our websites. Because they know what your salary scale is versus your neighbor. They know what your benefits are, because it's all online. They have access, just like everybody else. So again, they continuously review how things are going. Early warning budget reviews. You can see they're looking at 900 budgets a year. The one big thing is budget. By law, we have to update our transparency page. So as soon as you make adjustments, then folks in your business office or tech office are uploading information, whether that's audit to the state, whether it's your budget, and you have to post your budget within 15 days. And they go out and look at those as well. Projection model gives you just a little bit more of the corrective action plans. If fiscal stress is not declared after this correction plan, this is how they go about it. So let's, let's talk about Wayne Westline specifically. You get a letter in two weeks, Sam says, "Yep, ran your numbers. Looks like something's going on." You say, "Here's what we're starting to do right now. Here's our plan." He says, "Okay." Right now, they got a plan. There's no stress. We're, we're not gonna deal with them. But here's what they're gonna do. They're gonna follow up, to make sure what you told them, you're actually doing. They're also gonna monitor the, your enrollment and budget and audit. They're putting you, what I would call here, into that inactive spot. But right now is the time. Th- this is where you want to be, pretty much, right here. You know where you are. Early warning. If they declare it, yep, there is stress. Or at least a potential. Then it starts the whole thing. This is the ISD area. This is within 14 days. You gotta do some things here. They do it. 60 days, you gotta be in with the ISD. The ISD will report. It's about a two-year timeframe before Treasury wants anything from you. So again, this is the next step for that. The results of it, these are all old. We're not gonna worry about that. Again, this is another little bit of, of flow, if you will. So this is, this is after somebody has said, "Hey, uh, things aren't working out." They tried their plan. We've worked with them on the front end. Now we're going to the higher level, this preliminary review. There's something called the Emergency Loan Board. Why are they named it that? I don't know. Maybe they're giving loans? I don't think that's exactly it, though. So this is who will determine this word, probable fiscal stress. That's a bigger deal. That means now there is an issue. You guys can't get out of it. How do we help? How are they gonna help? And this is where things really take off. And this is where everybody wants to jump to, when they hear somebody has... And this is where everybody wants to jump to when they hear somebody has an issue. They wanna go right to this page. This page is bucket two, this is after you've exhausted everything on that front end, which is a lot of work, and quite frankly, most districts get out of it in that first bucket. You don't even get to this. So I wanted you to see it because you wanted to know what this long process looks like. Here's more about that. Again, that process, I'm not gonna waste our time on that today. And again, once you do it, once you get through that process, you will get kicked back into inactively being looked at from Treasury, just like everybody else. Here is their information. Some of these folks have moved around. This guy's still there, Sam here. This guy, good guy. Now they've been doing this enough years where they've seen everything. I worked at a school district one year, three years. Buena Vista Schools. I don't know if anybody's heard of it. It was up in Saginaw. And I had a lot of money when I left, so it wasn't me. But Buena Vista Schools no, no longer exists. They were taken over by the state and closed. There were two districts, they were one of them. And that, that was a terrible situation. No one wanted to see that happen. The community still is a little bit upset about that. So the fact of the matter is, don't be afraid of this, let them help. In some respects, they're gonna be able to come in as a third party and not have that connection. And sometimes that's what it takes. It's that third party that comes in and said, well, this is pretty easy. Boom, boom. And you say, yeah, but, but look at all this stuff we're gonna have to do. Yeah, well, here it is. So those are the tough decisions. I don't envy you. I've been on school board too. Those, they're very tough decisions. The problem is, that's why you're on the board. Who better to be on the board than you? Because somebody's gonna have to deal with this. You've got an administrative staff that wants to be in the same boat. They wanna get out of it. See, no one likes this stuff. And there are things that we're gonna look at, and I'm sure you're gonna, it's gonna be griefful for some folks. It is what it is in the end, and you gotta pull it out. Think about the next twenty years of this place. That, that's the key. There's some things that have to happen now to ensure it's here twenty years from now. And, and I know it's a sacrifice. Again, I worked at Buena Vista, I saw it, I lived it, and, uh, and I've seen it in other districts. You will get through it, but it takes a little bit of skin here at the beginning. Any questions, Kimberly?
Just can you go back to the name of this document, I'm sorry?
Yep. Oh, I might be able to do this.
There you go.
So my website is msbo.org, okay? Msbo.org. If you go to School Finance to this dropdown, you'll see Rules and Regulations. Hit that, and then you're gonna see State of Michigan. You hit that, this pops up, and you just, here's early warning. There you go.
Yeah, I have a question. You said a little bit, when they're talking about less than five percent, they're looking at the audit. So my question is, what happens in between? If our fund balance is ever lower than that in between briefly, but, you know, with revenue still coming in that will bring it up?
Yep.
Is that an issue?
It, it's, they look at your end, okay? Again, five percent's a, a marker. They're looking at trend.
Sure.
So they may come in and say to you, your trend is this, we know you're not at five percent, but here's your trend, we're a little worried about it. Show us what you did for your budget assumptions this year. So their, their discussion with you may get to the end of you saying, well, here we are, we're gonna do a budget revision, and based on a revision, here's where we think we are. And it's, and that was what that law was put in place for. Because as soon as you pass a budget, it's gotta be on the website in fourteen days. They monitor that.
Sure.
So again, what happens in the interim right now? The interim is, they're probably looking at trend, they're not looking at five percent. They don't care about five percent.
Okay, so for example, if we requested a report from the school board in between audits, they're gonna not budget just of what our current fund balance is right now. If they presented it to us and it showed that we are at four point nine right now, but we still have money coming in, and this is just at this snapshot of time, it probably wouldn't have much of an impact.
No, well, here's the problem with that, is that we don't necessarily have, we don't, we don't close our books every month to the extent that you would go, we're in a modified accrual basis account. Means that one time a year, we accrue everything, all the wages, everything else, all the revenues that didn't come in. So it's a point in time that they look at, and it's June thirty. Even, even, I, I mean, even today, if you had forty percent fund balance and you said to the business official, what's our fund balance today? It, it's not that simple. Because we don't do those accruals on a monthly basis, yeah, it, it's nearly impossible. And so we, we're on a modified accrual, that's how it works. They look at, again, they look, and, and that's what Sam has said repeatedly to me, don't worry about five percent. Worry about the trend, because we're gonna talk to you on the trend. But i, if, if you're looking at it and your budget is, you know, you're gonna have budget revision, and that's gonna spit out something. I would imagine they'd like to see that. And when they do see that, then they'll look at that again and say, okay, well, they have budgeted, it's at this percentage. So there, there's not a great answer for that, other than it's not necessarily a point in time. It is once a year, that's the biggie. If we did accrual accounting, probably need ten more accounts in your office. I hate to say it, that's just the way it works. John?
Yeah, Bob, we're shooting for March for our mid-year amendment. Um, the other thing I'd like to point out, the last decade, we've lost about ten thousand students. And one of the systemic issues, because I heard you talk about the per pupil allowance, is in a lot of cases, some departments have not been right-sized either to reply to that, so that's something too, I, I think, is we examine it, uh, something that needs to be looked at.
Sure. Sure, there's, you know, thi, this is not an easy situation, never is. And you do have to look at a lot of those things, you know? I remember in some of the districts I was in, they said, well, we'll just turn the lights off at night. You know, honestly, it's eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of your budget is people. We are a people business. That's what we do. And as a result of that, that, that's unfortunately a bill. John?
We're actually in the ninety percentile percentile, and, uh, that's not even counted categories.
Sure. Yeah, and, and, and that's heavy. I mean, that's the trouble with this business. When it's good, it's great. And we can go to the kindergarten rooms and redo them, everybody's happy. When, when we're where we are today, it's a little more difficult, and you gotta go back and, and make sure that what you're doing is truly what the students need first, and, and secondly, what the community expects of you. And that's, that's a big deal. I wish I could bring brighter, greater, easier news for you, but I tried to do it within an hour. And I could keep going.
No.
You said quite enough, Mr. Ty. Get the hell out of here. I get it, I get it. Go ahead.
I love it.
Oh, well, sure, you would like it. Um, again, anybody down in our bil, building is willing to help. Whether it's MASB, MSBO, MASA, MASSB, oh, all the organizations, this is why we're there. This is why people belong with us, so we can get you the information. We are not the state. I don't get paid by the state. I work within the state for, on behalf of board members and CFOs and everybody else's members. So don't hesitate to reach out. Yes?
And we're gonna work on our communication protocols, which is kind of, uh, if, if people wanna reach out to you or other people within your organization, I would ask that they include me in that communication, just so we have, that the open lines of transparency.
Yep, I agree. I, you know, my role in the, in the organization, I'm the executive director. So I'm the guy that's now worried about handbooks and, you know, what we're gonna do for our conference in six months. So when it comes to the nitty-gritty and today's state aid, I got people for that. So I might not be the right person to get a hold of at times, but again, it, it certainly does help us when the CFO and the superintendent are included on anything. Uh, last thing any of us like to do is get in between people and things. And, uh, you know, Bob Dewan hasn't been in your situation in sixteen years. I've been within the organization that long. So the day-to-days, you know, I get a little rusty on that. I, I'm kinda like my dad, and just do it. Well, okay, it's not that easy. I get it. Other questions or comments or? Well, thanks for having me. Again, uh, I, I wish you well. I have a really good feeling that you're gonna do the right things. You're gonna be on a, a better path than today. And it's, it's always not easy, but doggone it, you're gonna do it. You're doing the right things right now.
Great job, Bob.
Calling's meeting back to order. Dr. Weaver, do you call roll him?
Ms. Adney Mitchell, are you still here?
Present, yes.
Ms. May?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm here and, uh, Mr. Gray?
Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is two forty-three point two four, Review and Approval of Curriculum Instruction Assessment Items. With this curve, we have one item.
Yes, thank you. Um, I am requesting board approval, right up to fifteen days of virtual instruction in accordance with Section twenty-one F of the State School Aid Act. These days are restricted to emergency closures, student testing days, or for professional development purposes. Our team has developed a plan for virtual instruction, which is included in your packet and further outlined in the Wayne Resa Emergency Day Certification Form. Upon approval, parents will receive advance notice to implementation. So if you go to the last two, you can see the last two pages in your packet, um, it goes over how students would have access to technology, um, what it would look like if for some reason they lose Wi-Fi in the house or lose internet. Many of our students have app or don't have internet access, if you were aware. So we also have devices that we can send home, which have built-in internet in them, or built-in Wi-Fi, they're LTE devices. We're looking at kind of two types of scenarios in this. It could be a Wednesday and Hicks Elementary is out of power, so we have to call school that day. So the students would have Google Classroom set up, they might have an emergency packet of work to do at home. Um, we could also look at a scenario where SAT testing at the high schools, they wanna bring in a group to do the testing, and then put the other group at home on their Chromebooks for the high school through their Google Classrooms. It could also be, which I hope never happens, is another polar vortex, right? And we have a week of school where we can truly say, yeah, we'll, um, get technology out, put our students online, and still keep it counted as instruction. Any other questions?
Two quick questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Just in the case of with, you know, technology fails, internet fails and everything, how does that work for students attendance? So if a student, you know, they, is having connection issues or whatever?
Yes. So with that, it's like a two-way communication. So the beauty part of that is between apps that, um, the classroom teacher might use, Classroom Dojo, right? Or if you're able to get to email or even a phone call. So you can still do those connections without having a computer in front of you. Um, I'm just gonna speak to elementary level, a lot, all of our, um, schools use Dojo. So they could really text and say, hey, is, um, is Gem there for the day, right? Can communicate through that, and they could even check up on assignments or so over, like, don't forget, we sent this work home for her. So as long as we have that communication, we can still count that for attendance.
And school-age kids that have the Champions on a day where there was a polar vortex or something, they would be able to just attend school from Stevenson then?
Correct. So what we would have to do with any, um, school closure is first, we'd have to see, like, okay, if Champions is at Stevenson, well, let's say Stevenson was without power, right, then we as a team kind of go to that, okay, are we still able to host Champions somewhere else? Um, obviously, if Stevenson is still open and fully running, we would just run the Champions program there. Um, but that's just all part of those, like, you know, put our brains together as a team. What do we need to do with some of those little nuances? Yeah. And then what's great about this too, this doesn't even need to reply, but as you know, last year, I think it was Edison, or I don't, and maybe Roosevelt, they had to do extra days, but in Taft at the end of the year. This would prevent that, right, because we're able to say, okay, Taft is without power for three day, or three days, we can now do the virtual instruction, making them go further in June. Yes, Dr. Mitchell?
Just with the elections, the Indians talking about, uh, not allowing school to be in session there, that's another example, the free polar stations can go virtual during that time.
Yes, and, yeah, I think one thing I'm gonna add with this, which as our team read it through, is it does say, um, you know, with board approval, um, we can move forward, and then with, you know, we would obviously pre-commune as much as we can with our community, right, because we don't wanna catch parents off-guarding, they're, they're working and so forth. So upon the board approval, we do have a letter already to go. We would message that over and over, right? I would, we would say, school, put it in your newsletters. Full disclosure, I've already met with building principals and say, just, I wanna, you know, be proactive and pre-message this. It's gonna go to the board upon board approval, so start working with your staff right now. What would this look like, right? So they're already planning, um, upon if it's approved to be proactive.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
All right, do, do we have motion?
So, boo.
Dr. Weaver, do we have motion? Do we have support?
Support.
Ms. May, support. Dr. Weaver, do you call the roll?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Adney Mitchell?
Yes.
I am, yes, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
And that is four votes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is two forty-four point two four, which is Citizens' Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Do you have some? Oh, no, did you fill out? Excellent. Say your first and last name for the record.
Name is Laura DeMarco. Um, I'm not sure if all of you have seen, but Michigan Benchmark released a report. Um, they're a company that, um, works with other school districts in the area to, oh, I lost. I lost the, um, page that I was gonna read from. There you go. But anyway, they looked at the publicly available data on Wayne Westland's finances of the last few years of audit reports, budgets, um, and kinda analyzed that a little bit. Um, and they brought up some really excellent points that I think would be really great for the board to look at. Um, if that hasn't been disseminated, I can, um, email that to anyone who'd be interested or whatever. Um, but one of the big problems they brought up was that the accuracy of the budget forecasting has been, um, over the last few years steadily getting worse and worse. Um, the obvious outlier, the worst one, was last year where, where did the numbers go? The original budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year predicted, uh, like, four point four million dollar surplus. When the audit result, um, operating surplus, sorry, where the, um, audit results then, of course, showed the seventeen point six million operating deficit. Um, so as was brought up, um, over the last couple of presentations, um, making sure that the budget assumptions are accurate, looking over those was proposed in the, um, report as well, and, um, sorry. And then a couple of the other things that were brought up are how vague the budget proposals have been and, um, how in order to be an effective board and effectively oversee what you're voting on, um, we need more detailed information and, um, how the board can, we're looking to insist on getting that detailed information will help the board make a more informed choice. And another major point is that the audit briefly mentions with a short note that there was four point million dollars transferred out of the general fund. Um, and trying to find where that note specifically was, um... Yeah, the audit note says that... The audit notes, uh, the audit contains a note on page eight that reads, transfers out were greater than budgeted due to revenue that was not received by the end of the fiscal year. Um, and so kind of looking at it more detail into that would probably be really helpful because the report mentions that if this revenue is about to come in, then that will significantly help um, the operating deficit that we're looking at at the moment. So I wanted to bring that report and those things to the attention of the board, in case you hadn't seen it. Um, case you hadn't seen it. Um, and the, um, report also says, "Hey, we're a company in the area, we work with school districts, we wanted to do this, um, to show that we are invested in helping you guys, we see you, and, um, we are happy to contract services with you in order to do things like have a more accurate budget forecast." Um, and I think it's something that the board should look into and possibly decide to go through with, because we're clearly having trouble getting all of this information together so that we can make informed decisions. Thank you. Where did you want this?
Oh. Anything?
Hi, Yalden, thank you very much.
Any comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it. All right, last thing, no other sentiments for comment, uh, the next item on the agenda is 245.24, Superintendent's for comment. Dr. Dignan, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, sure do. And first off, wanna thank, uh, Minister Dewan and Mrs. Dinsky for coming and taking time out of their busy schedule, especially they drove from great distance, um, to be with us today. I wanna thank the board for, uh, the board workshop. Most importantly, I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Markie and Ms. Ostrander for, uh, doing all the behind-the-scenes work, uh, to make sure that we had everything we needed. I wanna thank Communications for kind of, uh, tagging in and out to kind of capture the meeting today. I would ask that we have more board workshops to gain a better understanding around various topics. Uh, we need to build out some of the community forums, and this must be a collaborative process with the board actively involved for any presentations. We've heard this theme many times, trust must be the bedrock of our work, especially dealing with adversity. Teamwork builds trust, and trust builds speed. I, I think of a quote by James Cash-Penny, bear with me, "The five separate fingers are five independent unions. Close them, and the fists multiply strength, this is organization." Based on our current situation, I have a friend that actually is my best friend, he's been a Navy SEAL for 20-plus years, he's a member of SEAL Team Six, we talk about leadership, adversity, and a lot of things that they experience. I wanna read a couple of them for you. These are tenants that they kinda follow. Slow is smooth, smooth is fast, take your time, pay attention to detail, and be precise. Rushing increases mistakes, add speed after mastery. Everything that we did has a purpose, we didn't do anything just for the sake of doing it, everything has deeper reason. Trust systems and processes, they lead to the most favorable outcomes in the long term. Always have a plan, but expect adversity. When it comes to training, you need to crawl, walk, run, start with ideal conditions to set the standard, then add adversity challenge, and then work to block out distractions. Focus on what is right in front of you in the moment, can't get to 26 without going through hour one. Don't fight the water because you can't win, water is the ultimate equalizer, the worst thing you can do when compromised and the water is panicked, stay calm, breathe relaxed, this applies to life, don't rest for reality. It's a fight you lose 100% of the time. Good leaders know how to follow, anticipation is usually worse than the reality, stay present, no sense in fearing something that hasn't happened yet. When you struggle, step outside of yourself, look to pour into others, take it, the focus off me and put it into we. If it isn't written down, it isn't real, strong teams use adversity to increase cohesion, weak teams are, are use adversity to erode it. When you feel strong, lend a hand to teammate, when you feel weak, reach out to ask for help from a teammate. We often have to make important decisions with imperfect information. Do your best you can with what you have, things will never be perfect. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is 246.24, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. I'm going to start with Ms. Adney Mitchell.
Well, I, um, I just wanna say thank you for, um, um, I believe the suggestion for the workshop came from Ms. May, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I wanna say thank you to Kim and, um, April and Dr. Dignan, who, um, brought it to life. Um, it was a very good workshop, especially the state that the board is in now, and I hope that we all can grow and learn from this, and just understand, to get farther, to get where we need to be at, we have to come together and work at each other, and we have, and we have to trust each other. I mean, trust is a hard thing to regain once someone has broken your trust, once somebody has misled you, or even told you a, a lie. And I just wanna say thank you to both of the presenters, like I said, it was a very enlight, it was a right-on-time training, and I felt like it got me to my next steps as a board member. And, um, and this Saturday, and go Lions! That's all I have.
Dr. Weber?
Uh, I have nothing to say today, except thank you to, uh, the folks that put on this forum.
Ms. May?
Thank you. Similar to my colleagues, I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Dignan and his team for organizing this, um, thank you, Mrs. Adney Mitchell, just for acknowledging me. I think this, um, both of the workshops that we had this morning were extremely informative, um, definitely gives the board some guidance on our next steps. I also would like to thank our citizens that came out to join us this Saturday morning, and, um, again, Dr. Dignan and his staff, and just the board members that are here, so that's it, and I guess, you know, yeah, I shouldn't say I guess, go Lions, not I guess, go Lions. Perfect.
All right, and I just want to echo what everybody else said, thanking everybody that came out today, our citizens, our speakers, and, uh, Dr. Dignan, Kim, April, for helping put this on, and of course, uh, Ms. May for suggesting this workshop. And I do want to echo what Dr. Dignan said about more workshops, in addition to a workshop on community forums, I do think we should hold a workshop, um, where we can discuss some of this about, uh, reviewing our goals and mission and vision going forward. Uh, with that, uh, yes, go Lions, uh, everybody enjoy your day tomorrow watching the game. And, uh, next item on the agenda is 247.24, Adjournment, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So.
So, Ms. May, do I have support?
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we can adjourn.